Everyone, welcome to the two thousand twenty-five budget workshop. I'm gonna quickly turn it over to Brian and the budget team. Welcoming you for coming back. I know, you know, nine o'clock last night leaving, coming back this morning. I appreciate you, thank you for your dedication to our community, our citizens. Thank you very much for bearing with us today. Team is prepared and to answer your questions and to take you through this as efficiently as it can. But in a rate that can give you all the detail and let you ask questions and make good policy decisions. Adoption of the budget about a month. Ryan, I'll turn it over to you and team.
Thanks, Sean. First off, I do want to just thank Adam and Jenny, the budget team, for all their hard work in this. They did produce and prepare this budget on a complete month delay because of Helene. So we thought that was a great idea to give departments and everybody more time to enter the budget. But when it became time to actually produce the budget, this team had less time than they normally do. And we were scrambling. And then they were also preparing for a revenue bond issuance at the same time as well. So they've had a heavy workload and I appreciate everything they've done. So if Adam falls out any point throughout this, he'll be okay and we'll bring him back in. So we're ready to get started here. So as always, our goals for this, or for today, I feel like I'm still at nine P M. Are to understand the recommended FY twenty-six fiscal year budget and to prioritize the level of services to be included in the corresponding taxes and rates needed to fund those priorities. So to start, I'll kind of give some context and set the stage. Hopefully give you all information that's going to make the rest of the budget flow and make sense. We'll jump into environmental services and the route study update from last year and an updated five-year plan of how we want to incorporate and implement the recommendations from the roots route study. We'll take a quick break, come back, jump into the the large portion of the presentation, talking about the general fund and going through the general fund model. We'll then talk about MSD funds. Try to get through that all before lunch and get the water and sewer funds squeezed in there. We'll break for lunch at about eleven fifty. Jill will be bringing in salad and pizza at that point. And we'll, we'll stay here for lunch to try to keep the day quick because this can be a longer budget workshop than prior years, we believe. We'll finish the other enterprise funds after lunch, so parking, stormwater. And then we'll also do special appropriations and then end with just general discussion and additional direction or questions for whatever the council may have. Big picture, the desired outcomes today and council's direction. From a tax rate perspective, the general fund and Main Street have no recommended tax rate change. So fifty-two cents per hundred dollars value for the general fund, twenty-one cents per hundred dollars of value for Main and Seventh Avenue. We are requesting an increase in the motor vehicle fee by fifteen dollars to a total of thirty dollars. Water and sewer rates are recommended to go up by eight percent for water, nine percent for sewer. The storm water rate is recommended to increase by one dollar for E R U or equivalent residential unit and an increase to the cap by fifty dollars. The E S F rates are recommended to go up seven dollars for residential on average and ten dollars on commercial on average. The benefits included in this recommended budget are a COLA for all staff at three percent, a merit of two point five six percent on average. There's a range that will be discussed in this and a four oh one K match at three percent. That's a one percent increase in the match over the prior year. The current year is two percent. The position additions are one in the general fund, one in the downtown fund, two in water sewer and three in the E S F. A reminder, we have trade-offs in everything we do. And oftentimes, we're talking about taxes, density and services. We kind of live in this increasing density, increasing taxes. Sometimes we get into the does not exist world, I think, a little bit where we're, we're thinking we're cutting services, increasing taxes and increasing density. But I think we are moving from the increasing taxes to the increasing density portion of the pie where we can have stable services and lower taxes. I think conservative budgeting over the past few years and growth, economic investment in our community, doing the right things to produce a really healthy and strong economy locally is starting to pay off. And I think we'll see that in our, our four-year forecast. Tax bases, just looking at a smattering of local peers in the state, ranging from twenty-two and a half cents per hundred dollars of value in Pinehurst to eighty-two and a half cents in Goldsboro, North Carolina. We're right around the average of this group at fifty-two. The average is fifty-two point four four. Most of these municipalities are either county seats or core economic drivers of their county. Within our model, we program and estimate construction timelines for entitled developments. So we don't include anything that's not necessarily entitled yet, but somewhere in the process of entitlement. This equates to approximately eight and a half pennies on the tax rate. And Adam will get into the general fund, assess value in more detail as we go. Go ahead, Jim.
I'm sorry, on the previous slide, is there any way at some point to look at, like, could we get some kind of an idea of land area for some of the surrounding cities?
Yes, I actually have that in the slide community.
Oh. Magic.
Yeah, thank you. It just makes me happy that I was on it. Yeah, we will provide that info.
Thank you.
So you can see the list of projects. A lot of these are still coming online. Like, we have, I think, thirty percent of towns at Stonecrest still coming on in the next fiscal year. So we have a lot of development under construction right now that you'll see in the model for two thousand twenty-seven. And these also drive demands for service. We have our cost of service model, which talks about density. It talks about proximity to service and it talks about, you know, said density, so acreage essentially of the units developed. And something like the Cedars project, very close to services, very dense, a lot of tax value with it. It, it provides a really high return on cost of service where something that might be further out, lower density, single-family detached might provide less cost of service value in the model. And then obviously, tactics and properties impact us as well. So as a reminder, we play bigger than we are. Approximately twelve percent of Henderson County's population is in Hendersonville. The statewide average for county seat to county is around thirty-three to thirty-four percent. So we're much smaller from a population standpoint. That also is reflective from the land area. We're approximately seven square miles or approximately one point eight percent of the total county land area. So very, very small portion of the entire county is the city. On average, Goldsboro is about five percent, Hickory is seven. A place like Greensboro is twenty percent of the land area of Guilford. And we are the commercial and economic driver for the county. We also bear the brunt of service delivery for two neighboring municipalities and county residents with limited tax base. So approximately eighteen percent of our tax base is tact exempt. This is equivalent to more than five pennies on our tax rate. And as I stated earlier, we do serve the commercial needs of the county. And so we are, we only have property tax to pay to provide the services. And so the residents who live here, the businesses who reside in the city of Hendersonville are paying the freight to supply the services for, for our users. We'll talk about COLAs and merits today. The League of Municipalities and Association of County Commissioners does a survey every year. This is the combined COLA and merit average across the state for FY twenty-six and the budget proposals. So you can see about five to five point eight percent in our region, five and a half. Our proposed combined is five point five six. So we are in line with the average. This recommended budget does not advance the living wage value of city council, but it does keep us keeping up with the market pay.
Do you know where we are in that percentile?
For living wage?
Sorry, when I said the previous slide, it was seventy-fifth percentile of the regional market.
Yes, so that was from our last paying class study back in two thousand twenty-two.
But our goal was to, like?
We were, our goal was to get to the seventy-fifth. We got to the seventy-fifth in FY twenty-three.
Right.
And we have kept up with inflation adjustments since. We have not done another competitive market study.
So we would have to do another study to tell where we ranked in that percentile.
Where we are, yeah, exactly. And really, the big, I'll say big four because we're included in that, but Hendersonville, Henderson County, Asheville and Buncombe. That's our direct competition for fire and police at least and likely solid waste. Some background on the living wage target. So approximately sixty-four percent of our job classifications are higher than the local living wage, which is twenty-five fifty-three an hour based on those varying policies. And approximately seventy-four percent of staff make a salary greater than the living wage currently. This is a view of our salary distribution over a normal curve. We used to present this a long time ago and I felt like it was good to bring this back. This just shows really, do you have compression in your workforce? Do you have a really young workforce? Do you have a really tenured workforce? We have a really good curve here. This is a pretty healthy curve. I would say it's, there is a lot of salary right at the start. So this is probably indicative of slightly less tenured workforce. So we do have succession planning, make sure we're building up our staff, training our staff to come into leadership roles. That is a lot of our focus. But this does not show any major compression concerns from my perspective. For personnel and benefits, setting the stage, giving context for the rest of this budget. You can see going back to two thousand twenty, this is all of our COLAs merits, four oh one K match, medical insurance, dependent coverage, retirement and wanted to list the safer grants as well and when those came on and when those became a full city burden to pay for the firefighters. So you've seen really steady growth in salary and benefits over the last five years for, for our employees. Some of this growth comes from unfunded mandated increases by the state. So you can see in two thousand twenty, our retirement contributions were eight point nine percent for general employees. We're up to fourteen point three five. That has been a tremendous monetary impact on the city. Law enforcement, respectfully, nine point seven to sixteen point one. We implemented paying class in twenty-two and twenty-three. So you can see the COLA increase of ten percent in twenty-two. And then we got to the sixty-fifth and seventy-fifth. So the ten percent got us to the fifty, fiftieth percentile of the market at the time. We went to the sixty-fifth percentile mid-year and then seventy-fifth in twenty-three. And so that in total was about a twenty-five percent increase in COLAs over those two fiscal years. You can also see the merits have gotten progressively a little more distance between the tiers there. So exceptional now is three and a half, proficient is one percent. In FY twenty-five, we put that on hold while we're doing a committee work to reevaluate that system. And then you can also see the medical insurances and the increases in our dependent coverage listed in here as well. This sets the groundwork on our total position counts by fund. There's been steady increases in staffing amongst all departments over the past five years in various ways, from fire to police to solid waste to grounds to water and sewer crews, parking becoming its own fund, so on and so forth. And then lastly, this is our total personnel and benefits costs increases over the years. So this incorporates everything. This is new staff, this is dependent coverage, this is COLAs, this is ledgers, retirement contributions. So in FY twenty, in total, we were paying about the eighteen and a half million dollars in salary and benefits for expenditures within the city. That has increased about eleven and a half percent. No, sorry, it's eighty-four percent. That eleven and a half is that year-over-year, twenty-five, twenty-six, to about thirty-four point one million dollars in total salary benefits costs in FY twenty-six.
Is that?
Go ahead.
Is that kind of normal to see that increase statewide or just our region?
I looked at others and they're experiencing similar drastic increases in personnel benefit costs. I think costs in general from twenty to now have increased dramatically.
Post-COVID.
Especially from inflationary costs and market competition. Housing, I think, is one of the major drivers of this. And you'll, you'll hear us talk about, yes, we're doing as much as we can on the COLA front. However, the housing market, the, the efforts that are being put forth by city council on the housing side, I think will have trickle-down effects on making the market more affordable till then.
With the ledgers, like, this is not just the city of Hendersonville, but it seems like everybody is seeing like huge increases. Is that because the state has cut what they're willing to put into that system? Or like, why are we having to continue increasing?
So our retirement system is strictly funded by all the, all the local governments. There's no state money, so it's all funded. It's, to give you the short answer to a very complex law problem is, when they were, the, the formula is based on keeping the system, trying to keep the system, retirement system funded as a defined benefit funded at, trying to ninety, above ninety percent funded, trying to get to a hundred percent. And prior, prior to Dale Falwell, who was, it's managed by the state treasurer. When it's prior to Dale, the, the forecasting, the actual numbers they were using, they were estimating a return of seven percent on their investments that went into the, the retirement system. That really was too aggressive. So when treasurer Falwell got there, he removed some of the investments and reduced that, that estimated, so reduced it down to five percent. So to keep it funded, the way they've done it is they, they, they looked at it a long term and they came up with a plan and they had to keep increasing the employer, not increase the employee contribution in twenty years, twenty-five years. Municipalities are now like, listen, we can't keep raising this number. The new treasurer, who's Briner, is that the new treasurer? Briner is going to go back and rethink because he's got a different investment strategy to try to fund the retirement system through more. Falwell liked a lot of cash in the investments. He wanted to keep cash. Briner says we need a, a good split. So the conversation is, how do we look at it to keep the system fully funded? But we can't keep putting the burden on the local government employee, er. The other conversation is, we should, we have to go back to the legislature if we want to raise the employee contribution. Because the employee contribution is around six percent. It's not moved. And so this is unsustainable. But there is a committee of predominantly city managers around the state that meet with the treasurer. We want to keep the system fully funded. Obviously, at this point, we can't move away from it. And so they look at it at the health of the retirement system. But it's unsustainable to keep going up because now, you know, at our percentage level, it's just unsustainable. So there's lots of conversations going on with the new treasurer about, hey, we've got to figure out how to spread this cost out, either raise the employee contribution, which would affect all of us, or change how they do their investments so they get more return. So that's a lot, that's a short answer to a very complicated, but it's been going on for ten years now, so.
Thank you.
Because we, ours is a defined benefit, not a defined contribution.
Right.
The contribution piece is if you had a four oh one, where we gave the, the money to the employee to manage their own four oh one K or I R A or whatever the case may be.
Does employee health insurance after retirement contribute into any factor of that, those monies?
No.
Okay.
Because only employee health insurance, only retirees, you have to be here thirty years. So not every employee is going to get that.
And those, but if, if they were?
Oh, yeah.
We don't pay retirement benefit on that.
Okay.
Sorry.
But other counties do, right? For employees, thirty-year employees for our health insurance. And then does that contribute to, I mean, just because like health insurance in North Carolina is one of the largest in the country?
Yeah.
Like, cost-wise, and does that contribute to those, that fund though?
It's completely separate.
Yeah.
The local, the retirement, thirty-year retirements are all local funded.
Okay.
It's not involved with the state. And then ultimately, you know, these are large numbers, right? But we have really increased our competitive position. We were, we started pretty far behind. And by the time we got to this twenty-two, twenty-three paying class, we took substantial measures to catch up. But we've also been enhancing our service delivery. I think that's been evidenced by our Kalia accreditation, our I S O one. We have excellent staff that provide excellent services for our community. Just a reminder on our A R P funds and where this is at. Of the two million that was dedicated for specific initiatives, we only have two hundred and sixty-two thousand remaining to be allocated in future budgets. And so that remaining is just the city public safety initiatives that funds the downtown police officer, code enforcement officer and downtown safety infrastructure. All of the other nonprofits have had their funds allocated at this point. On the housing initiative front, you know, this budget doesn't include a lot of direct operating funds or anything associated with housing. We've been operating in a grant-funded model to this point for housing. The proposed budget doesn't propose to change from that. We're really hoping to complete the housing plan, get the results of that and then start understanding what that plan implementation looks like. But in, from a good news perspective, we do have about five point four million dollars in different grants going to housing projects. So we have a hundred and sixteen thousand that was used for the Shane Phillips D F I and housing plan development. We have one and a half million from Dogwood for housing and land, mental health programming and housing navigator services. The mill fund still has two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars to be paid back. That has to be used for neighborhood revitalization projects in the future. So that's not available yet, but that is coming to the city. Additionally, for the mill, we have a two hundred and seventy thousand dollars that will be returning to the general fund. That is free general fund money. It's not dedicated to housing. We have one point one million dollars in our two thousand twenty C D B G housing rehab, housing rehab projects. We have another C D B G that we just received for two thousand twenty-four at one point three million dollars. We have the Apple Ridge project, which is a fifty percent water sewer, fifty percent A R P grant project at eight hundred thousand dollars. And then we have another travel and research grant for seventeen thousand dollars. And so that's, that's the current housing budget initiatives that are occurring in the city.
When does the C D B G mill, when it come back?
It's either seven, I think, or it's a fifteen-year with a balloon if they sell the property.
Okay.
So we're halfway through that. And if they sell the, the property, we would receive it all.
Twenty thirty-four.
Helene, want to review, you know, we talked about city council priorities at the council retreat. We are gonna, we're working on consolidating that, creating a good plan that we can track how we're progressing on our Helene recovery. We're going to talk a little bit about revenue losses here and cash flow and reimbursements that we've received to date, just to give you a baseline. When thinking about the rest of this budget presentation today, none of the additional numbers include anything from Helene outside of what I'm going to show you now. So Helene is going to be completely captured in a separate dedicated fund and it will be accounted for in an easy way that you can look in and say, here's what's going on from Helene recovery. And just to remember our, our financial resiliency, as we want to strengthen the city's financial position, explore changes to fund balance policies to maybe increase our cash reserves and ensure adequate funding is prepared for recovery efforts. So revenue losses, there is a bill out there right now sponsored by Eyes Moffett and Daniel for revenue replacement. Revenue replacement has not been common in any of the recovery packages yet from the Senate and legislature. So it is nice to see that there is a bill specific to this with members from our region on it, but we're not sure where this will land. It encompasses three areas, property tax, sales tax and water and sewer losses. And so on the property tax revenue loss, for example, the fresh market went from a seven million dollar value to a three million dollar value. The state would pay us the difference of four million dollars until the next revaluation year. So we're working with the tax office. We have a meeting on the schedule to go in. We're going to look at all the differences from all our Helene impacted properties and that will provide us the capacity to apply for this if this bill were to pass. This is a very attractive bill because we are doing well from assessed value increases, right, increases right now. However, we would be doing much better if it weren't for Helene. Sales tax.
Where is it now, do you know?
It got moved to appropriations, which we heard the other day is a little odd because appropriations only meets like one or two times per session to talk about the budget. So I don't know what that means.
Okay.
But we're watching it.
No further questions.
If May eighth, we'll, May eighth, we'll know if it, if it makes it to crossover.
Yeah.
Sales tax is based on a formula for previous quarters distributions with some formula about how the rest of the state's doing. We're going to dive into this, this, we're not quite sure exactly how they're going to calculate this yet. And then water and sewer fee revenue loss is just looking at quarters of prior years to our normal collections. So for us, this will not be a huge amount. As we know, our water system performed tremendously during the storm. Can't thank Brent and Adam and the team enough for how well that, that system did and they're advocating for investments in that system. But we'll have some money available from water and sewer revenue loss. Cash flow and reimbursement. So our category A and B, we have a full submittal in. So a lot of communities around the state went the route of emergency submittals. Essentially, you would submit an estimate and FEMA would turn around a half payment of that estimate quickly to your community. We felt like we were in a really good position from our accounting team side and from our public services side of documenting damages that we could submit the actual full submittal. So we move forward with preparing the full submittal. So this is our E O C, our labor for emergency response, our debris management, contracts, contracts and invoices and our equipment. And so in total, we have about three point nine million dollars in labor and contracts that we've submitted. We have an additional contra amount, so this is money that's going to come back into the funds. So this will help our funds bottom line. At the end of the day, when this comes back in, this is essentially regular salaries that we had budgeted. You can get regular salaries back for debris management. So we had about two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in regular salaries in the debris management field. We have about six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in equipment. This is essentially free money. This is money that we didn't spend out. This is money that's coming back to the city. That can be used for disaster-specific projects. So if we needed to buy a larger dump truck or if we needed to buy a, a larger loader or a chipper or invest money in a debris site, this is money that could go towards those things. Total estimate of a four point eight million dollar submittal. So this has been submitted to FEMA on April ninth. We're expecting maybe ninety days of review at P D M G and C R C and we hope to receive the money in late July. We've also been very aggressive on pursuing cash flow loans and insurance proceeds. And so we've received one point one seven million from the treasurer's office in the form of a cash flow loan. Division of Water Infrastructure has provided us nine point four million dollars in cash flow loans and insurance has provided us one point five million dollars. So we have about twelve point one million in, in cash flow, which is going to pay for cost of projects before we receive FEMA dispersments for those projects. So this is putting us in a really good financial position by pursuing these loans. Where we are in the process, so if you, we talked about the emergency category, so A and B we have submitted. We'll have a second submittal on those, but really, we're transitioning into the permanent projects. We're getting really into the deep waters of like FEMA process here. And so we have about five, we have five locations that are complete or underway for site inspections. So we prioritized our wastewater plant, our reservoirs and our intakes. In total, that's about a hundred and six million dollars of our hundred and sixty-three million dollar estimate for the permanent projects. It's only six percent of all the sites, but you can see it's a very impactful amount of money. It's sixty-five percent of all our, our estimated cost. So appreciate Brent and the team, they've been out wandering around in the woods with FEMA and measuring things with tape measures. The next set of locations, this equates to nine locations, the model, but it's really four. It's City Hall, City Ops, Patton Park, Whitmire and Thomas Park. So FEMA will be on site next week. We'll be visiting these facilities. It's about twenty-eight million dollars, about seventy percent, seventeen percent of the total cost. So those are, are underway. And we still have a large load of projects remaining, sixty-six locations. We're hoping we can do tabletop reviews. That's where FEMA just looks at it online and says, yes, this is good, this is bad. And it's eighty-three percent of all sites, but really only eighteen percent of our total cost. So we've really focused our, our, our reviews and our efforts behind the highest return projects for the city. And I think, just a reminder, it's marathon, not sprint. We're somewhere in this disillusionment phase. We, we all go through it from a staff, community perspective here. And just the timeline, again, we're, we're somewhere, somewhere down here in the developing projects field, documenting the work and, and getting staff to formulate projects for us. field documenting the work and, and getting staff to formulate projects for us. So we will see how that, that project begins. So we're working our way through it. I broke the clicker. A reminder of our financial condition. Last year, we introduced a financial condition scorecard to give us kind of a broader view. If you wanted to look at 10 ratios, what would that say about the city's financial health? And we focus this on our financial sustainability focus area. So why it's important, I want to run through this, our fund balance indicators. So this is essentially indicating our cash available to pay normal operating expenses. It represents emergency funds, which we've seen the importance of that recently. It gives us the ability to adapt unforeseen opportunities. So if there were to be something that comes for sale around town that we really want to purchase, this would be the type of cash flow you would use for that because it wouldn't be a budgeted item. It's beneficial for our ratings by the credit agencies, and it's required to issue debt with LGC approval. So you can see in our FY '26 estimate, we are estimating our fund balance. It's the top four measures, seven and a half million available. It's about 26%, so it's 1% above our policy goal and total fund balance of about 12 and a half million. Operating indicators, so these are important because it points to our recurring ability to fund services. This is saying, can we fund to pay our paychecks for our people to go do the work and pay for the repairs and maintenance, the fuel, all the day to day stuff? This represents our baseline cost to provide service, and a negative ratio leads us to deplete our fund balance or need new revenue. So if this flags negative, we're likely going to have in future years fund balance implications. You can see in '23, '24, operating ratio was negative. And then in the future years, our fund balance dropped and flagged as well. You can see in FY '25 and '26 estimates, we expect these numbers to be back on track and to be in a better position at six and a half and 2.2% estimated. Capital indicators, these represent our investments in infrastructure. It points to the quality of our infrastructure maintenance programs, and not meeting this ratio will lead to deferred maintenance and need for increased debt service or fund balance depletion to fund these projects in the future. You can see that this is where we've been balancing the budget the past few years. We have scraped capital really down to just primarily safety needs, regular maintenance type capital needs. And so we've been running just below 1%. We'd like this to be greater than 3% per year, and we have a plan to bring this back up as budget availability becomes stronger. And debt service indicators, so this represents our debt payments as a percentage of total spending. It points to our capacity to issue additional debt, and not meeting this ratio may impact our ability to issue future debt with LGC and bond rating agencies. You can see our debt ratio has been hovering around 15%, but we expect it to drop to 13 and a half percent here in FY '26. Lastly, assessed value indicators, this is just representing the growth and the economic vitality of the city. And it impacts our ability to maintain a sustainable service levels. Thinking about the diagram, we want this number to be high. Recently, we've seen 4.130 and a half at the revale, eight and a half last year, and we're looking at about 3% increase in assessed value this year mainly due to the Helene impacts. Otherwise, we are on a really strong growth curve that Adam will talk about. Again, the scorecard as a whole, you have this for your reference, and we can talk about this during the model. And then lastly, it's the final year of our strategic plan. So we'll be developing that for a presentation to you all in July, and we'll be working on gearing up for a refresh of this three year plan for your next budget process. With that, I'll turn it over to Brent and his team to talk about the route study.
A lot of information, any questions? Let's just kind of set the stage.
Just want to give context for everything else.
Yeah.
Since the next revale isn't until January 2027, that assessed value, will that, I mean, obviously, it's gonna increase like incrementally, but then the next like revale would be a more substantial increase potentially?
Yeah, that's what we're, we're aiming for, at least getting 15%. Like to see for our budget sustainability.
All right, Brent, Tom. You broke it, didn't you?
I did break it. So Brent just told me next slide now.
Tom, someone forgot. So. I'm fine. Yeah, we'll just go with it. So just, I'm gonna take a few minutes to go through a couple of slides just to kind of give you a snapshot of where we are right now and some historical data. So from 2020 for current, you can see our commercial accounts are going up 6.7%. Residential, 10.6% for a total of 10.3%. Okay. And with, this, this slide shows our tonnages for garbage recycling and brush. For the most part, garbage is going up slightly over the last couple of years. Right now, we're looking at 3.74% increase. You're fine. Our recycling is, is dropping. And I looked at some statewide averages, and that's common. It's primarily paper, which if you look at fiscal year 19 and 20 compared to 23, 24, paper's down, I think, 19,000 tons. Glass was down, down about 40,000 tons over that same time period. Plastic was up just a couple of hundred tons, and metal is staying about the same. So it's, it's, it's a common, common issue we're having statewide. Brush, we're dropping slightly. I really don't know or can't explain why, but as you can see at the bottom, Hurricane Helene has changed that. And for FY '25, year to date, we're, we've got 4,820 tons. And just for October to December, we picked up 3,432 tons. And also, our garbage is, is on, on track to, to be relatively high for those same time periods.
Do you think that 20 number could be COVID, everybody being home and throwing brush to the street?
Yeah, it could be, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Next slide, please. And this is just a snapshot of our, our rates. And as you can see, we've had some slight increases over the, over the, over the years. From commercial, you know, $27.5, $27 sent up to 30 now. Recycling, once per, once per week collection, that, so that's just recycling. Doesn't include solid waste. 12 in fiscal year 20 to 15 this year. Recycling twice per week, twice per week collection is going, going from 22, back in FY '20 to 30 now. The special pickup fee has stayed the same over the years. And then recycling, as you can see, there's been slight increases over the years up until where we are now. I don't, I won't go through every one of those, just in respect of time. Unless somebody's got questions about any of that. Current situation, so what we're looking at, you know, today is, is our trucks pick up about 1,000 to, to, or empty about 1,000 to 1,200 garbage carts a day. And so that's divided by, you know, there's a truck on each route. So we're getting, you know, 500 to 600 carts per truck per day. And we're picking up about seven or eight tons per day, per truck. With recycling, you know, 600 to 800 carts per day or three to 400 carts per truck, per day. And we're collecting about two tons per truck per day. Yard waste, we're doing about 75 stops per day for about two or three loads per truck. We're, you know, right now, we are running two trucks just because of storm sweep. Typically, we just run one truck with one operator. It's, it's best to have two just for safety and efficiency. When we did the, the route study, they did make note that 38% of the piles that we were picking up were, you know, a double handful of grass clippings and a few twigs. So that's, that's one of the things that we want to address with you guys today. And I think Brent will talk about that a little bit later. But setting a, a minimum size that will stop, that will pick up, you know, so that we're not, so we'll be more efficient. One of the other things we're, we're, we're in the process of working on is Verizon Reveal. So it's, it's, it's a tracking system. It also has a diagnostic side of things so that if there's something wrong with the trucks, it can send us a report. But it also has, we can monitor speed, we can monitor hard stops, reckless driving, those type things. It does come with a camera so that we can, it'll be forward facing so that, you know, we, if we wanted to, we could pull it up and watch what's happening in front of the truck or on the sides of the truck. Next slide, please. One of the other things that we're working on or have been working on is Track a Truck. We've had this in place for a little while. Our GIS team helped develop this. And so if residents want to pull up or open up this app, they can, they can track our trucks and see where they are in town and have a better idea of when we may be by their house or, or if we've already passed their home. So just some of the other responsibilities that this department does. We, we do basically a backdoor service. We, we call it walkout service. We have 84 of those right now that we, that we service. We also have a small route that we run just because there's places in town where the large trucks cannot get into or out of. It's typically operated by the supervisor or crew leader, and we typically run those on, on Tuesdays. We also do special pickups. Typically, we do not pick up household hazardous waste. We are right now for the storm sweep, but that's just because we had a place to take it. Most of the time, we ask residents to participate with the Henderson County Household Hazardous Waste Drop Off Program when those events take place. We do pick up furniture, TV, other things like that. And as you can see, we've got, we had 22 large appliance pickups and 88 special pickups over the last couple of years. We have had some issues with homelessness, as everybody knows. And occasionally, we'll go in on city property and, and clean those up. And I, I can't remember the total that we've had. I seem to recall at least four of them. One over next to Publix, one down by, behind Bay Breeze, I believe. And then there was one, one or two on Four Seasons Boulevard. But it was a, it was a group effort. It wasn't just environmental services that participated in that. It was, it was building maintenance, it was street department, it was property maintenance, the whole, the whole team. And then, you know, all that material got hauled to the transfer station. We also pick up trash in the right of way. Empty the receptacles in the parks and along the trails. Keep the dog waste dispenser receptacles full with bags downtown. All those receptacles in Seventh Avenue, we empty those quite often. And we have receptacles on the parking deck as well. And that stuff has to be done by hand because we can't get the trucks in the deck. And then new customer setup and deliveries.
Tom, what is walkout service?
So basically, if, if somebody can't physically take their cart to the street,
Okay.
they can get a doctor's note and, and give it to us. And then we'll, we'll go to their house, empty the carts, pick up the cart, take it to the street, empty it and take it back to the house.
Okay.
Other items we do, leaf collection, this is really, our property maintenance team does this mid-October through December, and then again in March. But the equipment is funded out of the ESF. Brush collection, like we, we've talked about, we collect weekly right now. We do have a maximum sized pile that we will collect, which is four feet by four feet by 12 feet or a couple, a couple of grapples with the, with that bucket is, is what we'll give. And occasionally, we'll have larger piles. Typically, what we'll do is just grab, you know, that amount and then leave the rest for the next week and then the next week till, till all gets picked up. Unless the customer wants to pay, wants to pay a special fee to get, have it all picked up at once, and we'll do that as well. The mulch program, and so all the brush that we pick up is taken to our yard waste facility out at, out at the wastewater treatment plant. We pay a contractor to grind that material up. We store it on site for a period of time, and then we turn around and give that away back to residents and, and the community. But the ESF pays to have that material ground up. And then we have staff members who operate machinery to, to load it up for the residents as they come through the line. And we're doing that program right now. We're about to wrap it up. So if anybody wants to get any free mulch or free leaf mulch, you might want to go get some today because we're, we're about out. We also pick up dead animals in the right of way. Sometimes residents will let us know, but typically, we'll just pick them up as we see them. We also support the special events by delivering carts and then picking them up, dealing with the trash. Being larger events, we have staff that support those events like at Garden Jubilee and, and Apple Festival. The ESS, ESF absorbs those fees and no charge back to the special event folks. But we, we do the same thing with all the garbage up and down Main Street, Seventh Avenue, the parking deck. So all that stuff just is absorbed, all those fees are absorbed by the ESF. So we have, since 2020, we have reduced the number of field operators from 14 to 13. I think that was back in, in late 2020 or early 21 when that happened. But we do have, like we told you, we've got two recycle, two recycling trucks. Each has two staff for a total of four people they run daily. We have two garbage trucks. There's three, three staff members on each of those for a total of six, and they run daily as well. Two brush trucks we're running right now. Each have, well, we do have two people on those trucks right now just to help with the storm sweep. Like I said, typically, we just have one operator and we are up and running one truck on a normal basis, but they do run daily. Like I said earlier, we have a lot of small piles of brush. It's just, it's more, more, more stops, and it's very efficient. So we would like to establish that minimum. We have one crew leader, Alan Cliff, who was here last night. He typically operates the knuckle boom. And if, if not the knuckle boom, then he's filling in driving one of the other trucks, which takes away from his, you know, supervisor responsibilities or other responsibilities. And then we have a supervisor who is typically filling in on the trucks, which also takes away from his responsibilities. And our attendance rate for Public Works is at 87.8% for sanitation or environmental services. We're at 88.2%, which is a little bit above the rest of the team. But it, it does indicate that, you know, we've got staff that are out quite frequently, and we have to have people from other departments to fill in and, and make sure that we're running our trucks safely, which does put a burden on the other teams in being able to complete their, their work. Next slide, please. Yes, ma'am?
Is that percentage of the number of field operators or is that across?
That's across the board.
Okay.
Good question. So typically, our day, we start at 6:30. They come in, do their pre-trips on the trucks, you know, safety inspections, make sure all the lights are working, make sure there's no hydraulic leaks or anything of nature. By seven o'clock, we're on the routes sometimes earlier. And then typically, we're, we're back at the shop after they've dumped their load from anywhere from 12 to 2 PM. And then balancing the routes can help standardize, you know, our process. Right now, it, it's quite unbalanced. We don't have total numbers, but, you know, some days we might be picking up 500 carts. Some days we might be picking up 300 carts on the route. So, you know, Brent and I have been talking and Brandon have been talking about ways that we can, we can help with this, and we're looking at some software options. I think Brent is gonna talk about that more later. I think Brent is going to talk about that more later.
Are these full-time hours, though, or?
Yeah.
So five days a week? If they come back at twelve, that's not really full-time hours, though, or?
Right, but they, they're not, and so part of the issue, some of the guys will take off and use their vacation time after they get back in, but they do have other stuff that, that they do at the end of the day. They come back in, they wash their trucks, make sure they're greased up for the next day, they're restocking their trucks with bags, with the dog waste bags. They have to sometimes deliver carts or go switch out carts or replace broken carts. They've got a wide variety of stuff that they could be doing in the afternoons to, to help fill that gap after they get back in. But one of our concerns is after, as we, as we keep adding homes, as we keep seeing these development projects come on board, that twelve to two P.M. time that they're back in is going to be more like, you know, two and four. And so, you know, we, we want to rebalance the routes to make sure we're doing everything efficient and, and prepared for the future.
But how long does it take when they get back to do all the things?
It, it varies day to day. I mean, it, you know, it just depends on what we've got going on, you know? If there's a special event that we've got to get ready for, they could be picking up trash on the side of the road, and done that in several places in the past.
It's a heavy distemper year.
Yeah.
Kitty's out, taking out raccoons. They're all the way up. The raccoons, it's kind of a smorgasbord of activities.
Taking the kitty out.
Why you hate the raccoons, man? Come on. Rest in peace, Chippy.
But all the, you know, we are, they're all tracking their time throughout, so.
Yeah.
If they're clocking out early, they're making that up with vacation, they have the full hours, we're just getting paid less for the week.
Right.
But do they want to get paid less, though? Like if there's, right, that's, I mean.
Yeah.
If there's a full day of work, eight or eight hours of work, I would assume most would want to be doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I don't think it's wrong to say some of them do like the ability to.
Yeah, we, we have staff members who, that's all they do. They, they'll use their time, their, their vacation time or, or wellness time in the afternoon. Some of them have to get off early to go pick up their kids, and they, they, they depend on doing that. And, and, and we talked about making some of them do the ten-hour workdays, and he said, like, if you do that, I'm, I'm gone. You know, he's, he said, I gotta go pick up my kids, that's, that's my priority. That hasn't happened yet, so he's, he's not operating our knuckle boom trucks, so we're all good. And this is just a quick snapshot of the equipment that we've replaced in the last five years. Our street flusher truck was replaced in 2020, it cost us sixty-two thousand. Again, in 2020, we purchased, purchased a garbage truck, which was the freightliner, for a hundred and seventy thousand. In twenty-four, July twenty-four, we bought the small route truck for fifty thousand dollars. In January twenty-two, we bought a knuckle boom for a hundred and sixty-five thousand. In October twenty-two, we bought a recycling truck, a Mack, which is a low-entry truck for two hundred and thirty-five thousand. Let's see, July twenty-three, we bought a four-by-four crew cab pickup. In July twenty-four, we bought another garbage truck for two hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then, most recently, we purchased the, our leaf machine, which is kind of a, it, it, it's, it's a step above of what we had been operating. So this one, it's got the, the cab between the, the truck and the machine, where the operator can set the cab, basically, and operate a joystick. And it's much safer by doing that, and it also helps reduce the number of men that are on the, on the ground operating the hose, by him being able to, to do that from the seat of the, seat of the machine. So again, that's just a quick snapshot of what we've been replacing. We try to do a, a large truck every two years, just to keep our equipment road-ready.
Thanks, Tom. I'll pick it up from here. So in June, I think most of you sat through at the June twenty-sixth workshop meeting. Our consultant, MSW, came in, and over the last few months before that, they kind of tailed our environmental services crews, they did interviews, they, you know, followed them out on routes over the transfer station and back, and documented all of their various observations and recommendations. So some of their observations, and again, you'll, you heard some of this with Tom's talk about where we are currently. Over two-thirds of the yard waste setouts are too small for efficient collection by the knuckle boom trucks. Our current GIS, we lack integrated seller waste routing. You saw the Track-a-Truck, we do have that, but it's not, we don't have the, currently have the capabilities to, to prioritize and, you know, make our routes more efficient, especially as we add accounts. And we don't, a number of companies sell, like, routing software that you can build on top of GIS. We're currently actually looking into the ability to actually do it within GIS, so we haven't figured that out yet, but that was an observation by the consultant. Our equipment's in good condition, as Tom just went through. You know, we are replacing trucks, in particular, on a regular schedule and following best practices. Best practices are, I think it's eight years for, for trucks. So we're, we're doing a good job of, of following those best practices and keeping on a regular schedule. And as Tom alluded to, we do have daily staff shortages. You know, the attendance rate might seem low, but, or might seem high, but the, that does require, when folks are out, I mean, on average, if you have thirteen folks out in, out in the field, chances are, one or two folks are going to be gone on any given day. So we have to do last-minute fill-ins. They're coming from other divisions within Public Works. It's reducing efficiency. It's, it could be raising some safety risks, in particular, if you have folks that aren't as familiar with the routes on, on environmental services, if they're coming in from other divisions. We do do training with, with folks, but you always, you know, it, it basically increases your safety risk to have folks that aren't acclimated to that role filling in. And in general, it kind of lowers the morale for other divisions that even can, or this is something that the consultant heard, it has a tendency to lower the morale wi, within environmental services, because in a lot of ways, you saw on, I think it was a couple slides ago, we have to run the trash trucks, we have to be at a hundred percent. So if other folks are out, it kind of, it kind of makes folks feel, in environmental services, that they can't take time off, because, you know, it's, it's impacting others. The city already owns our carts, which avoids a major cost, often seen when transitioning to automation. And route reductions aren't expected from automation due to our small size, and cost savings are more likely from reducing collection frequency. You'll see some of that with the recommendations. Benchmark communities, they, they, the consultant looked at ten benchmark communities. Only two offered weekly recycling, three provided every other week, one, two times a week, and four of the ten didn't even have recycling. And none provided the level of services that Hendersonville does, as was witnessed by the few slides back, when Tom kind of went through the, all the various services that environmental services crews provide. Next slide, please. So route optimization plan recommendations. So I apologize, this is a little small, but just going through a list of some of the recommendations, kind of what you can see in the background is, is kind of a sample of, you know, what a sample route optimization could look like. That wasn't scoped as part of that study, but again, we're, we're going to be working on that. Maintaining current staff and service levels will require higher costs due to the need for more trained staff, including regular floaters. That was a common theme of the recommendations. Require yard waste brush setouts and craft bags or, and/or minimum volume. You know, craft bags would be a situation where we would likely, you know, the city would provide so many bags, at least initially, for folks to set out. And that way, that would be standardized, and it would be obviously more efficient. Shift recycle, shift recycling and yard waste brush collection every other week. And again, these recommendations weren't given to, to us to happen all at once. They were given to us as, you know, as a, as a group, as staff, and as council, to kind of go through and, and figure out what we could do initially and what we could move to over time as part of a five-year plan. Avoid semi-automated collection for ten-hour shifts. Instead, automate the garbage, which would be, automated, and automated garbage is, is the sidearm, sidearm garbage, where you could, you could actually have one individual running that. And assign a, a third crew member to recycling routes using existing equipment. Since current routes don't fill full shifts, consider a pilot incentive, allowing one-to-two early, one-to-two-hour early leave if routes are completely, completed safely and on time, you know, that, and that, that was more or less a, you know, a possible suggestion as, as opposed to a recommendation, but that's kind of what Tom was alluding to a little bit ago. Implement routing software to improve efficiency and guide all drivers. That could, that could even go as far as if we keep adding stops, carts, at the rate that we are, you know, that, that could even help with directing the driver as, you know, new, new accounts are added. And then obviously, with any changes, launching, you know, with our award-winning communications team, launching a public education campaign, using direct mail, utility inserts, press releases, social media, and clear visuals. One thing that I did want to mention is it's a little, you can kind of see the, the yellow area in the background map, at the top of that, top of that yellow area, that's Cantrell Hills and Towns and Stonecrest. That's over three hundred new accounts right there, and I think, as Brian alluded to earlier, I think it's, we've got about thirty percent of that, those subdivisions to be built out yet. So we've looked at what we have outstanding, and over the next twelve to eighteen months, we're projecting about four hundred new trash accounts, which is a significant increase over one of Tom's earlier slides. I think it was about ten percent increase over five years. So, you know, that's, that's pretty substantial, which goes to the need for implementing the routing software and making some of these changes to improve our efficiency and, and maintain our level of service.
Brent?
Yes?
With these recommendations, won't that affect our budget? Because this would be an expense that the city would have to bear, like the, the yard waste bags.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So will that be passed on to the, our consumers?
Next slide, next slide, please.
So this is again out of the, I, I think this was presented exactly as it is here, except for the, the highlighting that I provided. So this was a table that MSW provided, looking at various alternative analyses, or it was an alternative analysis, where they looked at whatever that is, close to, I guess, fifteen different alternatives that we could look at, potential alternatives. The yellow highlighted section, and it's probably more clear on there than it is on the screen, on the wall, the yellow is the baseline, so that's actually what we're currently doing, weekly garbage, weekly recycling, weekly yard and brush waste, and five, eight-hour days semi-automated, which is what we're using with the rear loader vehicles. And that's the, you know, as, with their study, I don't know that that, you know, I don't know if we've truthed that to match it to our actual budget, but they were coming in a little over a million dollars. They were actually looking at how we can make changes to, to make, to basically reduce, hopefully reduce from the baseline. So they looked at all of these alternatives. I've highlighted three others. So alternative F would be weekly garbage, every other week recycling, and yard waste and brush collection. And again, that was one of the recommendations that the consultant made, and if, sticking to five, eight-hour days semi-automated, which, you know, we, we pretty much have to do until we start buying vehicles, automated vehicles, that will, that will lead to efficiencies in how we're, how we're operating. And then, so that was, that's kind of the orange highlighting. The blue represents where we could get to in, you know, future, a few years out, as we, you know, the, you look at the technology, hybrid kind of designates or represents going automated with, with some of our garbage. So getting an automated vehicle, which the automated vehicles, the, the sidearm loading vehicles are more expensive. So once we get one of those, or are able to operate it, we could have the potential to go to four-tens, we could stick with five-eights, we could go to four-tens. That's the, the blue highlighting kind of signif, that's the significance of the, of the blue highlighting. And again, sticking to obviously weekly garbage, every other week recycling, and brush collection. And you can see that, you know, the, the consultant kind of, you know, kind of presented that we would be gaining efficiencies and, and potentially reducing costs.
What would the cost of the sidearm truck be?
It's about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
So it'd pay for itself in a year, basically?
Do we have to get different carts, or would it work with our cart?
No, it'll work with our carts. That was actually one of their observations. You know, we have the carts that we would, already, so that would be a savings for us. You know, other communities that do that would have to have different carts. So that would be, that would be something that we would not have to do. But with the sidearm, you know, we have some pretty narrow streets around town and some topography challenges and other things. We would not be able to run automated everywhere. So, you know, a subdivision like Cantrell, or the townhomes at Stonecrest, or Ivy Crossing, you know, Cypress Run, some of these subdivisions could be pretty easily switched over to automated, but we would have challenges elsewhere. So we could likely never go fully automated with our garbage collection.
Which is basically where the hybrid models are.
Yeah, yeah.
When are we looking at purchasing the sidearm?
Next slide, please. So here's our proposed, and again, this is proposed, we're looking for feedback on this, but this is, this is what we're, what we're proposing on a five-year implementation plan. Year one, I think this was brought up a week or two ago. We, we do have a grant for RFID tags for recycling bins, and we're including in the FY twenty-six budget to, to budget for, including RFID tags for all of our, for our trash, as well, our garbage. And we would, we, we actually really need to do, it didn't show up in the recommendation, but the consultant rec, really recommended that we do an, an account audit. It's been a while since we've done that. Basically, going out, it would involve going out and, you know, following our, our trash trucks and actually pinpointing that, yes, address A has a ninety-six, ninety-six cubic foot bin, and our, you know, that's what we've got in our building. Because I, I can tell you right now, we probably have some, you know, things that have, you know, happened over the years where we don't have as much. happened over the years where we don't have as much, you know, clarity on, on what we have in our, in our building. So it's very important to, to do an audit. And we would, it would be a great time to do that as we're, you know, attaching RFID tags to all of our cans. Hire floater staff so that, you know, as you saw in the recommendation, this would increase safety and level of service in multiple divisions, even outside of environmental services, and improve morale. You know, we'd be, be able to run a hundred percent garbage and recycling out of environmental services as opposed to pulling from other divisions. Restructuring routes and based on the routing software. Love to be able to do that in turn with internal capabilities. We haven't figured out if we can yet, or it could be a matter of purchasing some software to build on or go on top of our GIS. And shift to every other week yard waste with the minimum volumes that we had mentioned before and craft bags, providing craft bags.
Real quick, the RFID tags, just to clarify, barcodes that you put on the cans to let us, track them and type them into account and helps your inventory which you have. And also in the future, if somebody says, we missed my can, I mean, when you pick it up, it would read and it helps track what's picked up and what's not picked up.
Yep, yep. Each truck will have a, basically like an antenna on it. So when that cart comes into a certain distance from the truck, it'll pick up that, that cart's been serviced. I did want to mention one other thing too about the craft bags. We, we don't necessarily have to use the craft bags. If, if council wants to, we could just create a minimum size that will pick up. So that is, that is an option. The craft bags are just an easy way to determine how much volume is, is on the curb.
I'm just gonna ask it, are craft bags brown paper bags?
Yeah.
Okay.
I sometimes use them myself.
So we're talking about like you could use an Aldi bag and just put all your brush in it? Or does it have to be a certain?
It has to be bigger than that.
It'd be bigger than that.
They would just grab it and go.
So you'd have to go, either the city would have to provide it or, or people would have to go purchase them like you do your recycling bags.
You have to go to A so.
Okay.
How big are the bags?
It, it, it varies. I mean, you could use a, well, it, same principle as a grocery bag, right? But they're just bigger. You know, and we could, whatever size that we determine to, to, to go with. If it's two cubic feet or, or cubic foot, you would get, you know, that's the minimum size bag that you could use.
We do have a lot of vines around here. That's what I have in my mind is like you, people clearing vines and then.
Trying to get the vines in the bag.
Chop all those up and get them in the bag.
Unless your pile's larger for the bag. If it's larger than the bag, no big deal. You know, say if it's three cubic feet or four cubic feet, you're fine, right? Where the, the bag, the idea of the bag is just you're establishing a minimum size that the truck will stop and get that week. Does that make sense?
You don't have to use the bag if it's larger.
If, if it's larger than.
If you've got like a little limb or something.
It's, it's fine, they'll stop and get it.
Good reason to get rid of the English Ivy. It's invasive.
Yeah, the, you know, it's, we provide a very high level of service and I, and I've been kind of thinking about this right from, from, you know, the consumer as a, as a property owner, you know, I mow the grass, I bag my grass. I put it out there, it's not a very big piles. But the knucklebone picks it and, you know, they stop, they have to put the.
Put it down.
Put the legs down, get out and get it the way we pick it up now. Whereas if, so if you think about it that way, then I think, well, if I had a craft bag, then I, then this week I'll fill up half the bag and I wouldn't put it out and then, or whatever the case. But from a city, I mean, so that's me kind of thinking city hat versus, but then we've been providing the service level and, you know, reducing it, just the calculus or whether is it better to just go to an every other week, a minimum, go to a minimum pile that, hey, until you get two weeks' worth of grass clippings, we're, the first week's gonna sit out there and we're gonna get it the second week. Those are.
There is a, there is a stormwater benefit of bags. Yes, you don't have stuff running down the drains.
I mean, personally, I like the bags too, because I don't want to have to sit there and go, is that two cubic feet? I don't know, like, I don't want to think about that. I'd rather just go, the bag's full, I'm gonna put it by the curb.
It would also be a great time to promote composting.
Sure would.
I think if we just have clear communication on when the things are happening. For me as a resident, I'm perfectly happy shifting to every other week, provided I know it's gonna be every other week and that we can save things for certain, you know, times. It's, it's the alternating schedules that I would have more of a problem with and just like the uncertainty of things not getting picked up. But if we have a schedule that we maintain, then I don't think that that's a big deal, just shift, personally.
And I think an every other week shift for yard waste solves multiple issues, right? Like, I think every other week for yard waste makes sense. Every other week for recycling, I don't know about, because I have a tendency to fill my recycling bin. I was gonna ask this, does the RFID or like, do we have any information about how full people's recycling gets every week? Any way to know that?
Well, the Hensley family is exploding.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, my recycling is. We try to like match, like bag for bag at my house.
Yeah, without having some type of scale system on the, on the trucks to, to weigh the cart as they come, it's a guesstimate.
Personally, when I had four recycling cans when I had ten, uh, tenants, we have two. It's just the two of us and we fill both of those recycling cans up every week.
Yeah, that's true, people could get another recycling.
Yeah, it's an additional cost.
But then they gotta buy that, yeah.
It's a small one too, right?
Yeah.
So I think this is good discussion. I mean, so, so we'll, we'll keep going, but.
Yeah, here's the next slide, we can get into some of the other, other recommendations. So year two of the five-year plan, we would purchase a recycling truck to keep on our schedule, our replacement schedule, to, to get in newer vehicles and, and switch out to the older ones to spare. Recycling, and again, we don't have to do this, but this was, this was one of the recommendations by the consultant. Recycling every other week. If we purchase a recycling truck, we would likely purchase a, you know, the larger, the three-man truck. So we, we would have the capability to, to pick up a little bit more specifically if we went every other week. And we would continue route rebalancing as new accounts are added. That's something that I had in for year two, but we would actually do that kind of continuously. Year three, purchase an automated leaf collection machine. As Tom mentioned, the leaf collection, the, I think the salaries are paid for out of stormwater, but the, the, the equipment is coming out of environmental services. So that would be a year three. Year three and four kind of could be interchangeable depending on observations, how many accounts really are added, what the rebalancing looks like of the routes. But would be purchasing an automated side loader truck. And at that point, we could possibly plan for, for ten-hour days or, or hybrid garbage. Again, that couldn't be everywhere, but we could, that's part of the rebalancing too, is figuring out where that automated truck can go and that can go most efficiently. And that could possibly expand the holiday pickup beyond what we're currently doing. And then year five would be to purchase a, a new garbage truck to, again, stay on that schedule.
So, like on the route planning optimization sheet, to me, it doesn't really, so we've been told really with staff that they, the ten-hour days are not ideal.
Mm-hmm.
And really the savings, I mean, we're never gonna be fully automated, right?
I was gonna say the best savings is.
Five eights in any situation with a hybrid model is gonna be ideal.
Mm-hmm.
And with the amount of money that we would save year over year, by, why do we have to wait so long to buy the sidearm? And start implementing that, especially if the newer neighborhoods are coming online?
We could definitely look at shifting, you mean like shifting that up to year two? Right now, we don't have budgeted, uh, equipment purchases in year one. But other than, you know, potentially routing software and some other smaller items, but the, yeah, we, we could definitely look at doing that and, and prioritizing that ahead of the, the recycling truck. We would have to look and see what our.
You need a three-man recycling, I thought. So we had to buy the recycling truck first before we could get the automated, right? Because you're shifting a person to a three-person recycling truck, is that right?
Yeah, if, if we're going to do every other week recycling, then we would need that recycling truck and the three-man crew.
But to get the sidearm, can you get the sidearm without getting the three-person recycling?
Well, the savings is based on every other week recycling.
Yeah, because you could actually use the truck that you're replacing.
Yeah, temporarily.
Recycle temporarily until the following year, if you wanted to.
As long as the oldest, the oldest truck that we're getting rid of is not one of the two-man trucks. So if, if we have a spare that's a three-man truck, we could use that.
I think hearing from council, they would prefer, I mean, I know it's in the savings, but I'm, what I'm hearing is we don't want to go to every other week recycling. But the priority would be to look to move toward the hybrid collection is what I'm, I mean, I don't want to put words in.
I'm not against every other week recycling if we could like plan for it, maybe if, I mean, I'm open to it.
Yeah, I mean, right now it's in year two. We, we can reassess a year from now and, or even two years from now and, you know, or you, you know, you all can reassess.
We're trying to move in that direction and we can allow people to, I mean, we could be more cognizant, I feel like, in how we're packing trash and that kind of thing, like. So I'm not, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I would, I mean, it's almost a two million dollar savings over five years to get into like a hybrid model. And we did this rate study two or three years ago, right? And then we just got the presentation last year. So it's, it's too many years, we just, can we do the things now?
I agree.
We can move the sidearm, huh?
Yeah.
Too long.
And these are the, these would be the proposed rates based on that five-year plan. We can obviously adjust. But you're looking at, you know, forty dollars a month for commercial and with the extra fees going up. And then residential going up to thirty dollars a month for the thirty-two gallon and thirty-two for ninety-six.
Just per container.
That's correct.
So that means I have four containers. I'm gonna have to start bringing my garbage up here again.
Well, you know, I mean, it's, it's per, per garbage. I mean, it doesn't include, you have four garbage or, or two of each?
I have two recycling, two garbage cans right now, but when I have tenants, I have to have four. Four garbage and four recycling.
Do you have the small, small?
Per sanitation can, yeah, per solid waste.
You have the small containers or the larger ones?
Remember they are the big green ones?
You got ninety-six gallon.
Well, and the rates would also be studied as well, right? If we were making significant changes in.
It depends what happens with the purchases. We're really programming this based on the capital needs and keeping up with the personnel costs.
Okay.
One thing, we had a discussion yesterday with the consultant a little bit. And she did actually all, another good thing that she recommended was doing kind of a cost of service analysis at some point in the future. So that might be something that we would want to plan for, you know, at some point, you know, a year or two from now to kind of figure out, especially ahead of looking at possibly every other week for recycling or something like that. You'd want to do kind of a, a cost of service analysis so you can actually try to figure out, you know, what is it truly costing us to pick up recycling and garbage at the rates that we're, that we're doing it?
We provided this model based on the current setup, not considering, you know, efficiencies that we might see in the future, but at a baseline for twenty-six, we need to get to thirty and thirty-two to fund the proposed budget. But future years, we'll continue to model it and figure out where we're gonna be.
Okay, so we get the sidearm truck next year, we're gonna stick with weekly recycling until at least another year?
Going every other for yard. The biggest change will be yard waste.
Right.
Which I think is more.
Then we're beyond our change.
Recycling for this year at least and then maybe. That's a tough sell for me to tell people that you're gonna do something that you've been doing less often. People bring that stuff inside.
Well, and for more money. It's gonna cost you more, but we're gonna come less times.
Right, like the interface there is, it's gonna be a heavy lift.
Yeah, I think if we can make some cost-saving measures in other areas and then reassess it in like a year or two to see where we stand, then.
Yeah.
Then it might be worth revisiting at that point too.
And I want people to recycle more. Like I want people at home being like, hey, what can I recycle? Like, I don't want people to be like, well, they're only gonna pick it up every other week, so.
So why bother?
I'm gonna put it in the trash.
He opened a can, a garbage can. What a conundrum.
My box, my cupboard box is out, I've got their own special little corner in my house, because I never know where to put them.
And to round this out, the investment in the, the floaters and the people is going to benefit every general fund and all our other services. By investing in this fund now, making the efficiencies, it's gonna trickle down into the general fund and other areas for savings. And the safety risk, the safety risk, I've, I've ridden on the truck and you can't train everything you experience out there before you get on it. You get out there and think you're gonna go forward and they start going backwards. Because that's what they do every day and you're not aware of it. It, it can get pretty unsafe pretty quick, so. It's good to have consistency.
We have people passing us on the right side of the road.
So we are gonna move into the general fund, but I'd say let's take a five-minute break if you're okay with that, Mayor, and then we'll come back and reset and get into general fund.
For council, I think we are ready to move to the next item here. So we'll turn it over to Mr. Mur and go through the general fund.
Thanks, John. Morning, Mayor, morning, Council. Gonna start our FY twenty-six budget recommendations as usual with the general fund. So we're gonna walk through that, but before we start, just a few reminders on the overall review of the FY twenty-six budget. So we're, we're gonna look mostly at the FY twenty-five revised budget compared to our FY twenty-six recommendation. And in some instances, we'll provide you a quick analysis of the requested budget versus the recommended budget, which is really a summary of what management pulled out of the budget or added to the budget during the process. Generally, we'll focus on revenues, followed by expenditures, then other sources and uses on top of fund balance. And we'll also talk, talk about strategic plans and future priorities. Another reminder, budgeting is both an art and a science. We provide estimates, but they are not guarantees. We budget conservatively so we can adapt to opportunities during the year. Our estimates are rendered upon budget adoption, they don't change during the fiscal year, and we kept them consistent to show the accuracy of our forecasting. Included in the general fund budget are some of the items that we've already discussed this morning. The cost of living adjustment at three percent, our prior recommendation was five point eight nine percent. Our merit-based increases at a one point two five percent differential. So one for proficient, two point two five for impressive, three point five oh for an exceptionally performing employee. In contrast to our one point seven five percent differential we previously recommended, there is no change to the recommended 401K match. That increase is one percent, so moving from two percent to three percent. No change to paid family leave or short-term leave. Our retreat presented budget included a twenty percent assumption for medical insurance increases. That is now, as we know, a thirty-three point nine percent increase and we have already. as we know, a thirty three point nine percent increase and we have already discussed um elders, but uh that would be a fourteen point three five percent employer contribution for general class employees and sixteen point one percent for law enforcement employees.
What is the monetary amount of that medical insurance increase?
I have a slide for that.
Oh, well, all right. You're really wanting to jump ahead.
I don't know. Um, so as I mentioned, we'll focus uh first on the revenues, we're gonna look at the revised recommended budget. The FY twenty five revised to FY twenty six recommended budget, that is. Um, starting off with our property taxes or ad valorem taxes. The FY twenty six recommended budget is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase compared to the FY twenty five revised budget. Um, our increased revenues in FY twenty six are mostly due to development based on the Henderson County um March eighteenth tax file. So in in that file, we noted a point seven two percent increase from three point two eight billion in assessed value in FY twenty five to three point three zero billion in FY twenty six. Um, the impacts on the specific categories are listed below. And I did want to mention that we recently received the April update, uh which shows an additional increase um to three point three seven billion dollars, which uh would add an additional three hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars of ad valorem revenue to the FY twenty six budget. That will be included uh following this meeting. I mentioned the revenues and um wanted to go into the two major factors that impact them. First, obviously being the property tax rate, so I provided a ten year history on the property tax rate beginning at FY sixteen and ending in FY twenty six, as noted in pink. Our tax rate has hovered between forty six cents and fifty two cents for the last ten years. Our revaluation cycles have helped um with a relatively stable rate while increasing levels of service. And the rate uh is important to our overall property tax collection equation, it's also um our assessed value, which is the second factor. Um, this slide shows the ten year changes in assessed values for the city specifically. Uh since our FY sixteen assessed value, one point seven million dollars, we've near, we've roughly doubled to three point four billion dollars shown in pink based on, again, the April tax projection file that we recently received. The majority of our assessed value growth has come from revaluation cycles, which are noted in the white blue bars. And non revaluation growth is mostly attributable to economic development within the city. In recent years, in FY twenty five and twenty six, we've experienced significant assessed value growth, thanks to economic development. This slide shows a longer history and the percent changes year over year and changes in assessed value dating back to two thousand. Um, again, we can see most of our assessed value growth has occurred during revaluation years, the light blue bars uh with development assisting in between years for the most part, outside the outliers being FY thirteen and FY seventeen where we experience negative year over year growth and zero growth. Our FY twenty five growth of eight point five percent for a non reval year is very strong. Um, it's the highest among the non revaluation periods in the window that we're presenting and three per, three percent estimated for FY twenty six is also strong. Uh, we hope to see that number continue to increase uh in the counties made projections when they're released. Um, so out, looking more specifically at economic development, this slide shows changes in assessed value on business personal property. Um, the recent Jable and Eli Lilly economic development projects have bolstered uh increased property tax and sales tax revenues. Uh, Jable and Lilly combined have added approximately two point four pennies worth of revenue to the general fund in FY twenty six and FY twenty five combined. Um, and just as a reminder, if if you're looking for the value of a penny uh for FY twenty six, we estimate that at three hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars.
Or before you move on, Adam, for the benefit of the council, this, I think this slide is just indicative of how important your stance as it relates to protecting our ability as it relates to growth boundary and ability to bring economic development into the city to help offset costs for our residents and how important that industrial growth is to maintaining a strong, sustainable community. So I might, it just, clearly it just jumps out right there, it's what that does to to maintain the level of service and protect um keep the cost at a sustainable level for our residents.
And a lot of this is, this is the business personal from the non incentivized tax at tax uh dollars, so we we're not seeing the full benefit yet from the tax incentives, however, we are seeing the spillover of non incentivized dollars that we're actually able to collect today and it's been this substantial just for the the non incentivized uh tax assessments.
Uh, this slide is the the final one that I have on the ad valorem property tax. Uh, this is the impact of different tax amounts on various property assessed values, so um for FY twenty six, rather than reorganizing this entire chart, we felt the important value to deliver here is if you own a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar or a four point five million dollar property, we're presenting both the annual change to your tax bill or the annual amount due at the fifty two cent rate and the monthly amount due at the fifty two cent rate. So if you own a house and you're, you know, maybe a first time buyer, own a condo and it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're looking at an annual tax bill uh to the city of one thousand three hundred dollars, which is a hundred and eight dollars per month. A six hundred and fifty thousand dollar property, you'd be paying three thousand three hundred and eighty a year or two hundred and eighty one a month. And um same breakdown for the four point five million dollar property.
I just want to reiterate, really, you're iterate, this is not a change, we're not changing the property tax rate. This is what you would pay at the current rate, this is what you're currently paying.
And just a reminder that people who live in the city that pay the city tax bill also pay a county tax bill.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
That's correct.
Okay. Cause we're county residents also.
We are. Funny how that works.
So uh mov- moving on to your next most significant resource in the general fund, that's that's your unrestricted intergovernmental revenue, which is mostly sales tax revenue. Um, our FY twenty six budget is an increase of eight hundred and forty one thousand dollars over the FY twenty five revised budget, the, again, the majority of that is sales tax, which is increasing six hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Um, we've mentioned growth, that's attributable to growth and also revaluation cycle and the um increase in property tax rate from forty nine cent to fifty two cent in FY twenty five. Outside of sales tax, we've also included a a small increase to ABC revenues and an increase to electric utility sales tax. Um, with with the support of the North Carolina League of Municipalities um revenue projections for FY twenty six. Now, I'm a little deeper in the sales tax, um again, there's a six hundred and twelve thousand dollar increase recommended. Um, we we feel comfortable presenting that because our actuals in FY twenty five are trending at about ten point six percent of um what we initially budgeted for each specific period. So we're testing out that growth for the remaining collection periods and adding a one percent natural growth plus a one point six percent growth from ad valorem impacts in FY twenty six gets us to about six point eight million dollars in sales tax revenue. It's not on the slide because we just received it yesterday, but um the Association of County Commissioners provided an early report on sales tax distribution for uh February sales. Uh, we received five hundred and twelve thousand dollars for that period, which was about a sixty thousand dollar increase compared to the same period last year and about fifty five thousand dollars more than we expected uh this budget. So it's not record breaking, but we're continuing to see sales tax trending higher than we initially budgeted lending to the increase in FY twenty six.
Do we think that's gonna continue, given?
Got a slide for that, too.
Great.
So.
Damn it, it's contagious.
Um.
Astonishing.
Yeah, so Keith Lane is the uh budget director, a seasoned budget director in the general county government. Um, through his own generosity and unhinged behavior, he has determined that it's uh reasonable and necessary to create a statewide sales tax dashboard that he shares with uh the Budget Association and to the dismay of some city managers, the App State uh Local Government Alumni Association. So um in his report, he noted that um September twenty twenty five sales tax revenue gross sales, um excuse me, were lower than the same period in the prior year, so um between September twenty four and September twenty five, there was a two point seven eight million dollar decrease uh in gross sales, so um looking at this on a map, you can see that it's not just us, it's not just Henderson County um experiencing this stagnated sales tax growth. Um, any county in red here, which is most of them, is experiencing some level of decrease. Uh, for Henderson County specifically, there's a ten point five seven percent decrease in gross sales uh from September, that same September twenty four to September twenty five year over year period. Um, it's not quite in the hundreds of millions of dollars as it is um in the statewide report, but a five hundred and nine thousand dollar decrease uh is is fairly significant for our county. Some of the things that may be skewing this uh slightly for Henderson County specifically are the loss of the Apple Festival weekend, which typically occurs in September, I think it was in August of twenty twenty four. Um, and then we also obviously had the loss of an additional weekend from Hurricane Helene, so um on top of the statewide trend, there are some other factors that are further decreasing, that's September twenty twenty five for sales number. However, in the city, um as we mentioned, um we're we're experiencing some some growth and expect that trend to continue. Um, we discussed the ad valorem pie in the property tax section and and here it's important to note, the stagnated sales tax growth was evident in FY twenty four, but due to the delayed revaluation impacts and on sales tax in FY twenty five, maybe an influx of emergency response funding uh related to Hurricane Helene were experiencing uh current growth. Notably, our November and December twenty twenty four sales funds were rec- record uh distribution amounts of just over six hundred thousand dollars. Just another way to look at it here, so th- this is the percent change year over year. Uh, any green bar represents growth, uh any red bar represents uh negative growth or a decrease. So as you can see, in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two, we had strong growth years uh with slow growth occurring towards the back half of FY twenty three and in FY twenty four. Our growth trends are picking back up in FY twenty five and our next few charts um help walk us through some of the uh impacts of that revaluation cycle um and assessed value on sales tax, so. Uh, in FY twenty four, Hendersonville's piece of the sales tax pie was nine point one five percent among all jurisdictions in Henderson County that receive sales tax. Uh, in FY twenty five, we increased to nine point nine three percent, so um just shy of a one percent increase there and then in FY twenty six, we increased just over one percent to ten point nine seven percent, or that's what our projections are saying. Um, so the change between FY twenty four and FY twenty five again is is due to those um assessed value changes with revaluation. And FY twenty five, FY twenty six, the the chart on the right, we attribute those increases to our property tax. So in this chart, we're showing um the decrease, the the units that decreased in sales tax revenue being Fletcher and Henderson County and FY twenty five with Hendersonville gaining about four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And then in FY twenty six, we expect all other units in Henderson County to decrease. Um, and we will receive roughly a half million dollars um as a result.
So to create this strange logic of it's getting pretty bad, but we're doing great, uh that September sales tax report where it was down ten percent for countywide, we actually were increasing due to that local distribution method, so as the state distributes it, Henderson County gets less because we have a pretty poor sales tax uh month for uh the county. We still did well just because of the the property tax rates, so just wanted to to bring that home. Uh, we are budgeting for the increase based on the local distribution, which is really the majority of our increase, so of that six hundred and twelve thousand dollar budget increase, about five hundred and fifty four thousand is local distribution. Uh, so we're really budgeting only like a one percent growth model for countywide sales tax growth and statewide. Does that answer your question, Lindsay?
Sure.
So the bottom line is sales tax is leveling, dropping because of the distribution method we're gaining, which is um again, allows us to, with our growth and what the council has done with bumping the tax rate up to support public safety is having a multiplying effect because it's based on the levy, right, it's based on, so it has a multiplying effect for our citizens, benefiting our citizens, but bringing us more sales tax money.
So um echoing what John and Brian just said, Henderson County overall sales decreasing, Hendersonville increasing because our piece of the pie is larger, pie is shrinking, but our piece of it is bigger. Um, moving on from sales tax and unrestricted intergovernmental, we have restricted, so these are revenues that are meant for a specific purpose. Um, in our FY twenty six recommended budget, we've included a one hundred and ten thousand dollar increase compared to FY twenty five revised. And that increase includes uh contributions from the Henderson County Public School System and the Sheriff's Office for School Resource Officer reimbursements. We have included no change to ABC law enforcement revenues or Pell Bill revenues. Our permits and fees are recommended to increase a hundred and eighty six thousand dollars compared to FY twenty five revised. Um, with a few sources decreasing, the the vast majority of that increase is due to the addition um fifteen dollars to the motor vehicle fee, which we generated about two hundred thousand dollars in new rent.
So let me stop right there, just to, don't want to jump ahead, I'm just perfectly clear of what we're recommending. Um, is, you know, currently, when you do your registration of your motor vehicle, you know, you know, you tag every year, you're currently paying fifteen dollars to a local, local fee that we use for public transit, up until this point, it supports our contribution to the public transit, right, that's how we're using it, right? Uh, what we're proposing, the state legislature, the law allows us to charge up to thirty dollars um on that mo- motor vehicle fee, um we can get, go up in increments of five dollars minimum. Um, we're proposing to add fifteen to. Um we're proposing to add fifteen to create the additional two hundred thousand in revenue. So when you renew your tag, each tag would pay a thirty dollar fee, and the additional fifteen would go toward um. Street resurfacing and paving is how we were, so the initial, the original fifteen will stay for public transit, the second fifteen will be allocated. For street resurfacing and repaving and anything within the right of way, it'll supplement our Pell Bill, so. Just being real clear about what that thirty dollars does, and it's thirty dollars per tag, so. And so it would be based on the vehicle, so that would be paid by anybody in the city that has a vehicle registered in. The corporate limits of the city, so not only property owners, but folks that may be renting property, um that, so just wanna be clear. What what we're proposing, so.
What is our current cost share to transit?
Two hundred thousand, about.
It's like one eighty nine.
Okay. Um the FY twenty six budget includes a decrease to investment earnings. And um that's just attributable to lower anticipated returns on our existing investments in FY twenty six. Finally, I wanna hit on miscellaneous, uh just because there's a significant percent change. Uh in FY twenty five, we have a lot of miscellaneous revenue specifically for HPD, Public Works, and the Fire Department. Um that we don't budget for at the beginning of FY twenty six. Um that's something that as that revenue is coming in, we'll. Propose budget amendments and leverage opportunities as they become actualized, so. We're not aware of any miscellaneous revenue coming in right from the get go, but we will adjust for those um that come in during the year. So kind of flew through revenues, just wanna pause, are there any questions before we move on to expenditures? Uh so continuing with the general fund, we have our um personnel and benefits expenditures first. Our FY twenty six recommended budget is a one point eight two million dollar, ten point six percent increase compared to the FY twenty five revised budget. And as we've discussed a few times um already, just as a reminder. Uh that that increase includes a three percent cost of living adjustment, uh merit increases, which remain at the FY twenty four levels. Medical insurance increase of thirty three point nine percent, um or a dollar increase of eight hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars for the general fund. Uh 401K match increase, and then also the elders increase, increases and the addition of a fleet maintenance technician. At our council retreat, we presented a living wage catch up plan. Uh that is represented in the chart on the left, and we were asked about uh what would need to be done. Uh during revow year if we wanted to catch up all during FY twenty eight, which is our next revow. So um to to catch up fully at any given time to the living wage as it currently stands and is projected to be, we'd need a. About a twenty eight point seven percent cost of living adjustment. Um if we deferred until FY twenty eight, uh we would eat that entire twenty eight percent cost at at that time. Uh looking at what that does to the assessed value. Um if we if we leveraged three percent cost of living adjustments in FY twenty six and FY twenty seven. Um we would need to increase our personnel and benefits budget by about three point seven, three point eight million dollars in FY twenty eight. And we would need to recapture about twenty point six two percent of any assessed value increases uh during that year.
I would note that this is just the general fund, and this would have cascading effects on water and sewer rates, sanitation, and other other funds.
Wanted to provide a more specific chart, um we've been talking about uh local government employee retirement system contributions a bit. So uh this table just shows the rising cost of elders um since FY twenty. Uh you can see that each year we're we're increasing between two hundred and fifty and about five hundred thousand dollars. Uh in FY twenty six, we project a four hundred and thirty six thousand dollar cost increase just to fund elders within the general fund.
Um so before we move, just to get back to Mayor Proteam's question, you know, the. Regarding Leggers and how the rates have increased, just put a five point. When we started the kind of stabilization fund or funding of the Leggers rates. You know, ten or fifteen years ago, was, it's not been fifteen, probably ten. The employer contribution was around seven, seven point five or six percent, so you can see now it's grown. In both cases, over ten or eleven percent over that period of time, so it's been pretty significant. Continuous increases um for the Leggers, for the employer contribution.
For the general fund since FY twenty, that's about five pennies.
And if there aren't any more questions on personnel or benefits that we can help with, our next set of slides go into. Operating expenditures that are recommended in the next year budget, so. Included in the operating budget is an eight hundred and twenty seven, eight hundred and twenty six thousand dollar, excuse me, increase. Um with the majority of that being the introduction of Pell Bill back to the general fund. If council recalls, in FY twenty five current year, we decided to use uh Pell Bill. To support the Seventh Avenue Streetscape Project. And outside Pell Bill, there's also an increase uh to property liability insurance, which citywide is um increasing by eleven point two five percent next year. Uh most other items are roughly consistent with the FY twenty five revised budget level. And we don't have um too many specifics, but we did just wanna show council that. You know, we we don't just gloss over operating each year, we take time and review comments, our departments are are very good at. Explaining all the costs, justifying what they need, um which makes operating budgets in the city of Hendersonville very tight. So um Brian was kind enough to find a comment where I wasn't saying something unhinged about the operating budget. Um Justin Moore wrote an entire paragraph about the Fire Department's uh contracted services, which we really appreciate. And um it's just a quick overview of how the operating budget process goes. On the capital front, our recommended budget is three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which is a hundred and seventy nine thousand dollar increase over FY twenty five revised. I would say in this section, the more important thing to note here is that um during the revision process, we. We received requests of uh close to two million dollars and adjusted about one and a half million dollars out of requests. So um although it's very tight, our three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar recommendation does include some very high priority projects and acquisitions. Um just to call out a few from the list, we've got a voice logger for a dispatch, which is a requirement. Uh Swift Water Rescue Company, which is a boat, trailer, and motor fire department. We also have a Lucas CPR device for the fire department. Some door replacements, equipment trailers, improvements to the Updale Cemetery, and also some traffic engineering improvements included in the budget.
And I'll say, you know, one thing that Adam jumped over, I don't, I don't think he did it on purpose, but was the fleet paint booth in there, and. We are, you know, where we're spending money here, I have to give credit to Andy Brogdon um. With our fleet maintenance manager, we brought in-house some of our upfitting and repairs. For our fleet, which are saving us money on the other side um as it relates to outsourcing. The upfitting, police cars particularly, but also other vehicles. You know, in some cases, we would order a vehicle and it would take seven, eight, nine months, maybe even closer to a year to get it upfitted. With a private vendor, and he's brought that in-house, trying to get those vehicles on the road. So we want to continue to support his innovation.
One of the last sections I wanna hit on on expenditures is our debt service number for FY twenty six, that is a one hundred and eighteen thousand dollar increase. And the majority of that is due to new debt on vehicles and equipment we plan to acquire. In the next year budget, those being uh six marked police SUVs, three public works trucks, uh one dump truck. An excavator and a tractor. That brings us to the end of expenditures, um we'll quickly go through other sources and uses. Our three hundred and forty nine thousand dollar recommended budget uh represents transfers out to um some of the other non-major funds. Being the Main Street MSD Fund, Seventh Avenue MSD Fund, and the Parking Fund, uh which have all historically needed general fund support. At the estimated budget level, and this is reflected in that final memo that we provided in your binders. We estimate a zero dollar need for fund balance or transfers uh to Main Street and Seventh Avenue. And we we anticipate about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars going to the Parking Fund at the end of FY twenty six.
One thing um I will say here is is we've done our revised budget. One thing that I have particularly concern about under our initial proposal was. Transfers out as it relates to the to our smaller funds from the general fund, and so. One thing that I focused on in addition to, we'll talk about fund balance in a minute, but also. The reliance of these other funds on the on the general fund, which takes away from general service dollars and expenditures. So as I look to reduce from our initial proposal, this was something that I really wanted to focus on. Parking fund going forward, we knew it's gonna have to be, but protecting these other funds and protecting the general fund from having to support the smaller funds, so. As we look at benefits, and and the and the big driver in any of the other funds is personnel costs, so.
And all of those uh recommended budget items lead us to our fund balance recommendation for FY twenty six. The important takeaways here are that the end of FY twenty four. Um the audited fund balance in the general fund is eleven million seventy two thousand one sixty five. Which is the same as the FY twenty five beginning of year fund balance. Um by the end of FY twenty five, our estimates are showing that we'll increase fund balance by about seven hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars. Uh to eleven million eight seventy six fifty. And then our FY twenty six projections, if they prove accurate. Um will increase our fund balance by an additional five hundred and forty thousand dollars to twelve million four eleven three twenty. So as as John mentioned, our our goal with every budget um that we're presenting for FY twenty six was to. Ensure that all of our funds are financially sustainable and reduce the general fund's need to support uh non-major operations. That's the end of general fund, at least the slides, we're gonna go into the model. Are there any questions before we transition over?
This is where we'll probably talk a bit more about what's in the budget and what's in the future budgets here, so. Uh as you know, we take everything, we put it into our model, I'll talk a little bit about the model, especially for Gina and Melinda, this being kind of your first goal, that uh make sure you understand what's in here. Uh but we try to produce a scorecard, that B plus grade is based on that financial condition we talked about at the beginning. Essentially, the number of red boxes that appear represent an arbitrary uh score of our financial condition. Um so we're running about a B plus with the the scores currently. Again, like I mentioned earlier, the capital ratio being one of the larger concerns currently, we've moved past our operating expenditure and fund balance uh ratio concerns. And we have that uh less than three percent assessed value increase this year, um so we'll be looking at that. So the model displays a a really that scorecard being key, we're looking at those ratios to make sure we're sustainable. But it's also showing our fund balance as a total, uh in the bottom left, it's also showing the available percentage. Uh you can see that increasing up to thirty percent in FY twenty seven, I think I got my timeframe messed up on there, I do, so that should be twenty thirty, I apologize. The amount above and under our minimum fund balance requirements listed in the middle, and our net earnings from year to year is listed on the right. Uh and then lastly, you can see the tax rates and revows, growth from development on the top left, that's required to produce uh these numbers. Uh so it has a bunch of toggles, I'll pull out of this in a second and go ahead and show you how the toggles work. But just to let you know what's included in all those toggles, fifty two cent tax rate, again, no change. This tax rate drops to fifty cents at revow in FY twenty eight. Uh three percent COLA, we've discussed the sustainability scores in the bottom left. Uh it includes vehicle and equipment financings every years, every year in every budget, includes a ten million dollar general obligation bond for transportation in FY twenty seven's budget. And it includes a twenty million dollar general obligation bond for parks in FY twenty nine's budget. Uh it includes one fleet maintenance mechanic and a percentage increase to the 401K match. Includes a capital increase to get our capital ratio up in FY twenty seven of half a million dollars, and that recurs annually. Includes about eight and a half pennies or three point two million dollars in new tax revenue through FY thirty two due to new major developments. Includes our health insurance increase of eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars annually for the general fund, with the motor vehicle fee increase.
Is that an average?
Is that eight fifty nine?
Yeah.
That's the general fund only.
Okay.
The total was like one point six or something, the whole month, but eight, eight sixty in the general fund.
Um could you go back to the previous slide?
Yes.
Um where was I? Oh, uh so the twenty million um Geo Bond for parks. I don't know if it's appropriate time to talk about it, but I just like Patton Park, right, and just not having a pool for. Many, many, many years, I don't feel like it's a good option, and when or when do we talk about that?
In just a second.
Okay, you got a slide for that?
Well, well, we can kind of just open it up and we'll talk about what we should include in here. Want to again reiterate, Helene is completely out of this, there's no Helene impacts in this operating budget. Uh and then we also uh really helping us out at the end of the, we were closing out the Fire Station One and Edwards Park projects. We're gonna have five hundred and twenty six thousand dollars of under budget, essentially under budget funds that will come back into the general fund. At the end of those those two major projects. Uh so I'm gonna hop out really quick, this will be difficult to see, but really, we wanted to show. From a general stance to for the public, for for staff, for everybody, how this operates. This is all based off estimates, so this is not budget information, this is this is our estimated information, and it all starts on our income statement. It has data going back to twenty fifteen uh from our actual spending. All the way down to the account line for every single account within our general ledger. Learn that back up. And it projects out through twenty sixty. And so we'll project that, it's, we don't really operate that far out, we try to kind of work in a four year uh volume here, but uh just to show that we are projecting out that far. Uh and all of this rolls into our fund balance and our indicators at the bottom, and you can see them flagging here from just a more uh general ledger approach. We have an inputs tab where we can input new projects like the Parks Bond, you can see over here on the left. We can turn these things on and off, and it will do different things to the model, um so I'm gonna leave that on for now. Uh if we wanted to talk about short term repair loan fund for Patton, we'd put three million dollars in here and see, see what happens, right? We also have our new employees, so I think a key thing in this model is we haven't programmed in a lot of new employees, we know we're gonna need new employees, so that's something to keep in mind. As we see that we have some capacity, we know we're gonna need to add police officers to this model, we know we're gonna need to add sanitation workers, grounds workers, things like that. So that's a a one thing to keep in consideration. You can change the tax rate over here, which will change the revenue projections, and it's also pulling in uh revow projections and and what occurs at at different revows from our assessed values. All this plus, we can add in any additional. All this plus, we can add in any additional baseline cost we want to. So you can see CIP base level here, this is essentially saying, hey, we're, we need to get our CIP back up a half million dollars more in twenty twenty seven, and we're gonna run that through the end of the model through twenty sixty. So it's baking in an additional half million dollars through the rest of time here. This has our sales tax distribution increase just for FY twenty six starting, we just have it as display only because we already have an estimate. If you wanted to add COLAs, you can turn COLAs on at different levels, and it will add that into the model. Our favorite thing, the quarter cent sales tax, which would fix all our problems. You can add that into the model, one penny pilot on, somebody a half penny pilot on a on a tax exempt property, what that would do. And then we also have the revale living wage in here, if you turn that on, it breaks everything. Sorry. And then
Okay, Adam.
Property taxes from redevelopment.
Everything.
It does break everything, and these are the the projects we have based on year. So you can see we're we're tracking all the entitlements and construction projects that are coming in and building them into what our future trends might look like. So with all that said, the current inputs, you could do a ten million dollar transportation bond, and you could do a twenty million dollar parks bond and run a twenty seven percent available percentage of fund balance in the revale at twenty twenty eight. The key thing to remember is you're you're capturing fifteen percent increase, and you could put your tax rate at fifty cents. So.
And that is a six cent tax increase.
Yes, because the the revenue neutral would be forty four point two four here. So we project all that to show, you know, what we wanna maybe be thinking about, what we'd be planning for in the future. And really, these toggles are yours every year in the budget process to say, maybe it needs to be a fifteen million bond and we need to add some police officers in, or maybe we need to increase the COLA by one percent, th- this is essentially at your discretion and at your direction. We've provided, what we tried to provide was, especially after this twenty three point eight percent available fund balance and our negative operating ratios is we've spent two years of really conservative budgeting and keeping things tight so we can get to a point where we're looking at what opportunities we can add in in the future. So at this point, I'll I'll pause and say, open it up for discussion, anything we've heard today from benefits, living wage, pools, roads, you name it. We're we're open for direction at this point.
Could you remind us again what we would have to do to leverage the penny TDA tax? And then be able to use that penny and basically allocate that money like for parks?
Yeah.
Per se.
So the TDA is authorized up to six percent, they're currently charging five. It would take an act of the board of commissioners, a recommendation from the TDA to increase that to the six percent occupancy tax. For them to say, we're going to share it with the city, it would take an interlocal agreement and partnership between the parties to say, the city should have some of this money.
So you're saying there's a chance?
If you had someone who could make that happen, yes.
Do you have a magic wand?
I mean, they could use the money too. We've got a big slate of park development that needs to happen as well. And if if that money was just earmarked for parks, I don't don't understand why we are not seeking that money.
Without some sort of impasse.
An impasse, yeah. Seems to be where we are.
Uh, I'd like to see it break everything.
You wanna see it broken, okay. All right, where is the COLA? Or living wage, here we go. All right, so turn the living wage on.
Awesome.
Yeah, our available fund balance went off to seven percent.
Deepened.
Yeah. Yeah, we get in bad bad shape without turning off the bond or other. Battling with other, so it's, the these are the extreme options, right? This is the twenty million dollar bond, this is the full twenty eight percent cost of living adjustment. If you were all were to say, find us something in the middle, we can go back and tweak and adjust the plan to say, all right, we're gonna add a couple of police officers every year, we'll make it not the full living wage, but we'll get thirty percent of the way there, we'll do a ten million dollar bond. That's the benefit of this is you all tell us the priority, we'll go back and tinker with it and try to bring something back that's sustainable.
Oh, just also, so the living wage calculation that would be in twenty twenty eight is in inflated, it's factoring in like inflationary numbers and all that.
Inflation. Right.
Okay, and then I guess the other question that I have about living wage specifically, the the title or definition of it. Does that include the benefits and insurance that we provide?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah. The health insurance cost for our living wage calculation, now correct me if I'm long wrong, only includes things like co-pays and over the counter purchases.
But living wage is like a salary package.
Right, it includes the entire package of what we provide.
Including like the percentages that we pay of health insurance.
That's correct. Yeah. So it's twenty five dollars an hour, not considering that we're already paying seventy five percent of their dependent coverage and a hundred percent of their full health insurance coverage.
So considering this nosedive, I would rather see us do a little bit more COLA now as opposed to kicking the bucket down the line, because it's coming, and we're just gonna end up being in the same position we were when we did the pain classification study last time, except it's worse, because it's like triple what we would have to increase. So to me, I think it makes more sense to add a percent or two now and next year so that we're not having to jump thirty percent the following year. Because I also feel like this problem, I mean, I know we're doing a lot with housing, but over the next three years, it's not gonna be solved. So we're still gonna be struggling to keep people. So what does it look like if we do the?
Yeah, I was gonna ask that, what would it look like?
Four percent and five percent.
All right, I'll add one percent to COLA, all right, let's go back just to see where we are, all right, we're at twenty six point one. We add one percent on the COLA. We're at getting into the twenty five. We're getting into the caution.
How far into the caution do we go when you do five? I just wanna see.
I'll do the five, okay.
Just let me see it.
It turns red. So we drop.
But this is so with a ten million dollar transportation bond and a twenty million dollar parks bond.
Correct.
I mean, I think we should at least do the four percent. Can we look at?
Yeah, we could.
Four percent and two ten millions?
Any problem?
I will do it. Gets you to twenty five and a half percent and then twenty six percent.
It's not, it's still, it's not a huge difference for half the parks bond.
Every
Which I guess may make sense.
And ten million on parks is gonna do nothing.
Nothing, yeah.
Every five million to spend on a bond is one penny, essentially tax equivalent. So just yeah, just keep in mind.
Okay, so that's not the shift, that's not the helpful shift.
No, it's not helpful shift, twenty million, we can do more with twenty million.
Yeah, we should, yeah. But then that brings us to Jen's question about Patton Park and waiting.
I think it was, I think it was always gonna come to Jen's question, yeah.
Years, years and years and years to have a pool again.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the loan thing.
So it would be twenty, March, it would be March twenty six? For the good one?
No, it wouldn't go in the ballot until November, I think.
March, you could, you can issue primary or general, so you could do March twenty six or November twenty six. For the transportation, we were suggesting a March twenty six. That way we could prepare for the FY, it would align well for FY FY twenty seven's budget adoption and actually doing the projects on the backside of the bond. The parks could be any time within twenty eight.
And then if it passed, we could move forward even before we got, even before the end of the fiscal year and before we actually got the?
If it passes, we, yes, we would create the project ordinances,
It would be a part of the S. Okay.
And we would reimburse ourselves with bond proceeds once we receive them.
Yeah, okay.
What would, what would an actual anticipated timeline be before there was a pool at Patton Park?
So conceptual design process right now, we are scheduled to present to you all September twenty fourth. So we're doing the public input meeting on May nineteenth at four PM at the library. So we're gonna have a public input meeting there, do additional programming with the consultants to figure out the options we wanna pursue. Do a second public input meeting based on those programs in August. And then we'll come to you all with the recommended options for September. If council feels confident in an approach, those options would come with cost estimates. Then we would begin the schematic design process, which would lead lead through the traditional design process, so schematic design development and construction documents, that's a ten-month pro- process. Some point during that, we'd be either engaging a CM at risk or bidding the project out. So you're looking at September of twenty twenty seven before we're getting bid, September, October, twenty twenty seven. Assuming this is all, you know, running smoothly, there are hiccups in these processes, as we know, with all our construction projects. And then so you release construction in, say, December of twenty seven. They start construction. You've got at least fourteen to sixteen, I'd say fourteen to eighteen month construction schedule.
Probably depends on the scope of the project.
Yeah, exactly, you really won't know, it could be a year and a half, and then you're you're opening the pool. Apple Festival of twenty twenty eight. And then closing it a week later.
Unless it's indoors.
That is, I mean, that is the, that is the approach of the pool has been damaged. We can take this opportunity now to do a holistic review and rebuild of this city facility for the future years. Or we could say, timing is more important to us at this moment, and we need to just bring it back as it is as quickly as possible. At the retreat, the direction we thought we had heard was more, let's do a holistic.
More, we do it.
Do it right.
Do it right.
I don't know that the GO bond pushes it back too much if we're thinking, I mean, that, I guess that is six months, right? September to to March to get the full green light to go ahead.
And the Geo bond is not the only vehicle to do the pool. Because it would be a brand new facility, you could do without the referendum, and you could leverage the facility as the security and just say, Adam and Jenny, go go borrow the money in Crystal, and they would go and borrow the money based on the facility as the security. A little bit of a higher interest rate, but not, well, I don't know what the market's gonna be like.
Well, then if we did that, is there an option to add a referendum that does a similar, does a similar thing after we've already acquired funds for?
You can, yeah, you, the council is is within your prerogative to say, put a general obligation bond out for XYZ, if all five of you or at least three of you say, you all need to do this as staff, we will go and do that, and then with that comes potentially some tax increase. And no matter what, when it's listed on the bond document for the vote, it has to list the tax increase that it's equivalent to. So if you did a twenty million dollar issuance, that vote would say, this is worth four pennies on the tax rate. No matter if you have the money to pay for it now or not.
Right, okay.
It's gonna say it no matter what.
And I can't remember, when we did the retreat, did we have an estimate of how much it would cost to just repair the pool to get it open?
It's, um, I don't, I don't
But we also don't have any extended damage, do we?
We don't.
Still doing the evaluation.
We're actually meeting with FEMA next week at at the site. And that's just the, Brian had the slide up, that's just the initial site inspection. Also, we we don't know what it would take to bring it back, and we might have to bring it back or bring it up to current code, which would be much more involved than just basically like rehabbing the existing.
Right, right, right. Yeah.
Which is probably pretty likely.
Yeah.
So we don't currently have a price tag on that, but that'll be one of the, they're gonna look at several concepts.
I mean, so it seems to me like we don't really have an option to move it up, like this is just, it is what it is.
And the benefit with this is is FEMA will be providing some form of compensation into this project, and we're gonna try to get as much to build it back better as we can, that is kind of their motto in their words. They will bring things to standard, they will move things from floodplains, so it will mitigate things, we're gonna push on that as hard as we can.
Well, then even if you tried to do the loan, it doesn't really matter because of design time and.
That's right, we're
The timeline is what it is.
These processes take time to do right.
So impatient. By the time we get a new pool, Colby's out of high school. It's a disturbing thought.
I would like to also have some serious discussions about our benefits as far as insurance. And like for this next year, like really start looking into claims and opportunities for dependent care, whether it be at a different facility, I understand party does not offer dependent coverage care. But fifty percent of our claims are dependents.
High claims.
I'm sorry?
High claims.
High, right, and so I feel like there are cost-saving avenues that we could start really looking into as far as our health benefits. I understand that Lacrosse's CPAC is really trying to average like no more than five percent increases per year, maybe likelihood of it being closer to three, but five is like their like upper end goal, so. But, you know, the city is coming up with a lot of extra money this year, it is costing us one point six million dollars extra to continue to provide the same great benefits that we give to our employees. And that is a lot of money. And so I think that there is a lot of value in what we are providing as well. So just that's all.
Yeah, I think we can certainly be looking at clinic options and doing a very just holistic review. And you're suggesting us, hey, we've we've gotten the hit now. We've stomached it, we, no tax increase with it, and it is taking away from other potential service provisions, but going into the next twelve months, really deep dive on what else we can do to adjust the program, is that?
Yeah, and I mean, I don't wanna cut benefits, I don't wanna take benefits away from people who have, you know, received them. But I also hope that people understand that there is a significant value to what we are providing our employees. I've mentioned the wellness days as well, eight extra days per year. I don't know many other companies that are providing or places or other governments that are providing the benefits that we are to our employees. And that, you know, yeah, there are other places that you could work where you're getting three weeks of paid vacation per year, but your insurance benefits are horrific. And I mean, I have friends who work for hospitals in Buckham County whose, they can't even use their benefits at the hospital, like, so, you know, we provide really amazing benefits, and I hope that that is received.
So I've heard a couple of different options out there playing with the model. So kind of putting a fine point on this and direction for staff as it relates to council member Simpson's suggestion regarding COLA. Staff recommendation now is three percent, I heard a request to look at going to four percent is on the table. Also, I think Um, also, I think, um, the comment, the concern regarding benefits is received. Uh, toss out there, would the council like for us to reeval- reevalu- evaluate the number of wellness days that Mayor Pro Tim Hensley has mentioned? Um, to maybe reduce that number a little bit to offset, offset that up. Put that out there on the table, um, it's, it's been suggested maybe.
Okay, this is what, sorry, we, I just hadn't, I thought about wellness days. I just had a thought about wellness days. Can I jump into it?
Uh, absolutely, yes.
Okay. Is there? So initially, when, when the wellness days thing came up, we thought that there was more of like a, an incentive to them, right? Or like a related incentive to keeping insurance costs where it is. Is that because we, I shouldn't say we, because I don't wanna be in a position where we're, we're taking things away from people that have them, right? Like people deserve to have their days and their time, and if they use it, great. Is there a compromise around like what incentivizes those wellness days that would meet what you're talking about?
Like making the program
Like, will it serve to what you initially thought it was, rather than taking a day away?
Yeah, because, um, and this is, this is my fault. I don't know how many of us knew that that was a benefit. Did anybody raise a hand if you knew there were eight wellness days?
I'd forgotten until you mentioned it. And, and the idea was that if you incentivize people to, uh, exercise and get out there and do the online health checks, that they would be healthier and would not have the, uh, doctor's visits and hospital visits and all. So if you incentivize them to do all that good, healthy stuff, then in the long run, it would help keep the, uh, insurance rates down. So that was the idea. And as was mentioned, it started out, you either got, uh, day off or two hundred and fifty dollars and then did away with the two hundred and went to the, just the, um, the days off.
Yes.
As incentives for people to live a healthier lifestyle than, than maybe they would otherwise.
And how long have we been engaging in that style of program?
Since two thousand ten or eleven. And I think, and, and just kind of, and this is all anecdotal because now we're looking, we're staring at this thirty-three percent increase, okay? So, let me, I will say this, I think his, we have, I think we have seen benefits from the wellness program. Folks, um, we see our employees who, who need the steps, who take time at lunch and go and exercise and get out because, hey, I wanna get my steps, I want this day as an incentive. So I think we have. I think, you know, insurance utilization ebbs and flows. Um, and I think also part of, you know, the high claimants are, are really drive, and some of that is unavoidable. Um, but some of it is avoidable. So, um, there's, there's some balance there related to the wellness program. Um, and I think part of the increase also is, as Councilmember or Mayor Pro Tim Hensley mentioned, some of the increase is related to healthcare in North Carolina in general. Part of it is outside of our control. We could, we could have the healthiest workforce in the world and because of what's going on, you know, things happen in life and then what's going to happen on in healthcare is driving those increases. I mean, if you look in the newspaper, you see the state health plan is having trouble. Every health plan is having trouble because, you know, of the market in North Carolina. So, um, I think there's probably, it's a good time to talk about the benefit and what level it needs to be at. Um, but I think it's a little bit of plus and, you know, it's a little bit of a balance here. I mean, I don't wanna say, I can't, you know, now that we're looking at a one point four, five million dollar increase, the data is hard to say, hey, the wellness program. But I think historically, we could show from a, from a mental health and from incentivizing some of our folks. Um, you know, not everybody participates, but the folks who do, it does, hey, I need to get my points up so that I can, and I need to get out there and exercise at lunch or whatever, so.
And we can br- bring back real examples of who is making the incentive and what they did to do that. I mean, I can share, for example, for me, I'm going to the gym about two times a week and I get probably sixty thousand steps a week. And I missed the wellness payout this past quarter. Uh, because really to, to do a good amount of steps, go to the gym, you really need to do the extra wellness quizzes, you need to participate in like the sugar reduction plan. Like we had a sugar reduction campaign in February. I did not participate in that. If I participated in that and tracked what I was drinking and eating, I could have gotten probably the wellness incentive. But it is kind of like the, the tier, we can bring examples of what it takes to get it.
Yeah, and again, not that wellness, so for me, I didn't know about the insurance, I didn't know about the benefits. And so, um, several years ago, when we increased the city's, um, contribution to, uh, dependent coverage and like to pay for more of the health insurance, it was because I thought that the employees were participating. To me, if you're participating in a wellness program, you're taking the steps necessary to, um, be healthier, to lower our insurance claims or our cost to provide insurance, then I think it is worth or there's value in, in that. Like paying more for the insurance. But I didn't know that we were already offering this part. Um, and so I don't want to be the person that comes in and says, hey, I didn't know we were offering this, so we should just take it away. Because that doesn't seem nearly fair or equitable to me to do that. But, mm, if, if these wellness steps have not, and it's not all about money, right? Like, you know, feeling better, getting exercise, like there's, there's a quality of life value to that. But if the purpose of the wellness program is to help lower claims and to help lower insurance cost, I'm not sure that I'm seeing that in the numbers. Now, obviously, this year is a outlier because of the insurance situation that we're in. But I'm not sure that I see the, the numbers. And I think that's something that we could also work on. I think next year, really evaluating ways that we can save on claims and our overall cost of providing, um, urgent care, E R. Visits, mental health clinic. Like, I think that there are ways for us to save money on that. I think that those are things that we could evaluate. But, um, but still, we are, we are now increasing our cost, one point six million dollars this year. And I don't, I don't know, I just seems like a lot of money.
And I'll add to the, just to give clarity too, is that like there, there is the extra layer on top of the wellness requirements to get the dependent coverage. So you're actually having to meet the biometrics.
Yep.
Like the preventative screenings that are kind of a step above to get your dependent coverage. The depend, another point, dependent coverage is only available to folks who have dependents.
Right.
And then wellness is available to the full employment base. And then the last piece, if we could, I think we could start looking at way, it's really hard to tie wellness program directly to claims up or down. Cause a new, new drug will come out and the people will be using the R X, keeps them out of the hospital, but it increases our claims cost because that R X. Is extremely expensive and that might just be a one-year blip. Um, but we could, what I'm thinking in my mind is, and this is something we'll come back to council with, is we look at wellness participation, we look at the biometric screenings, we see if there's a correlation between wellness program participation and those making the scores and better biometric screening scores on average across the employment base. That would be something to look at, I think, of are we effectively getting, uh, our B M. Is in better places and things like that? Um, and we can come back and say, here's, here's what we have. The data we do have has shown that our non-compliant biometric screenings has decreased year over year. So that is trending in the right direction.
Yeah, and there are models though across the state that do analyze that. I mean, I know that, I know that Henderson County's wellness program does analyze those numbers and claims numbers and, you know, specific claims numbers, whether it be musculoskeletal claims or, you know, high-cost contributors. And so, I mean, I know that there are models because I know that they actually presented it at like a state conference because the model was very good and it was saving them money. So that would be, I think, worth looking into.
We can provide, definitely provide that.
So what I'm hearing regardless of wellness days is we're gonna hold tight where we are, but we're gonna take a look at that and all of our benefits and how we support wellness among our workforce, our teammates in order to, you know, take advantage of what we're paying for. Okay, so is that the consensus of the board for direction for us right now on, on the wellness?
Yeah, I know, it's mine, but I, I obviously care what everybody else thinks about it as well, like.
I mean, I'm happy if we wanna look at it.
Yeah, I think looking at it is fair. I think, to be very clear and frank, I would love to not touch anybody's existing benefits and wellness days. And all that stuff is important and it gets used and I think it matters. And that, and to Jen's point, if there's a way that we can, we can be more efficient and effective in how we utilize them, I don't see the harm in looking at it.
Yeah, I mean, everybody should walk and eat better and all of that. But sometimes for some people, they need that incentive. And if it's a day off, uh, you know, it, it may be beneficial in the long run for the city's bottom line.
All right, so directions, leave that alone. The other piece to this for direction from staff, cause this ultimately, um, I think this is a good opportunity to kind of get a feel for the council related to the COLA. Um, that Councilmember Simpson was discussing. I think it's the other decision point that we put in the model. Or four percent is that, and I'm, I'm looking around, uh.
I'm good with four.
Could we look at the model again? This is with the four?
Mm-hmm.
So the, the, the big impact is just, it just, we're hovering there at the twenty-five percent of, of that fund balance. Assuming based on our projections and including, this does include the two, but the debt service doesn't come on past, uh, debt service, it does include the geo bond.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Wait, at the ten or twenty?
So the twen- the, the twenty is out in twenty-nine, so it's kind of at the bottom of this model. It's really, you're not really seeing the full, it's twenty, goes to twenty-eight percent. I can look really quick just to see net earnings. This is really what I would be concerned with. After the bonds issued, we run a super tight net change in fund balance of two hundred and, about two hundred thousand dollar increase. And that's a good, that's to the good, uh, and, and growth catches back up and we're in good shape again. So, uh, those are all good numbers.
Could you do a half a percent? Is it all based on whole percent?
I can do half.
Sorry.
You're good.
So if we did three point five, just think, I mean, you get a little better there, three, because the thing is, is it compounds, right? Once you're there, it continues to, and, and I don't wanna, it's, it's your budget, so I.
Yeah, I can see it's from twenty-five point five.
To twenty-five point eight.
To twenty-five point eight.
I like four percent better. I'm comfortable with that, point three percent.
Your budget.
Cause otherwise in two years, we're gonna be having a really, really, really hard discussion.
All right. We okay? Four percent? All right, there'll be, there'll be other, we're gonna put four percent in there. There'll be other opportunity for y'all. It's not set in stone until you adopt the budget. So there'll be other times to talk about it. So y'all can talk about it at lunch and as we go forward and if we need to bring it back and it's easier to, okay, sorry.
Is the M S. D. Is really quick and break?
I think we do water super after lunch, yeah. So, um, the M S. D. Is are your two, uh, Main Street districts. One being Main Street and the second being Seventh Avenue. First, I'm gonna hit on Main Street, uh, it's a little larger than Seventh Avenue. The recommended budget has a total revenue of, uh, seven hundred thou- excuse me, six hundred and seven thousand four hundred dollars. This includes a three hundred and seventeen thousand dollar recommended Ad Valorem property tax revenue uh, based on, again, the Henderson County March eighteenth tax file. This might slightly change, uh, depending on their May projections. It's a point five seven percent net decrease in assessed value. So FY twenty-five build value was a hundred and fifty-three point six million dollars. And that is, uh, projected to decrease to a hundred and fifty-two point seven million dollars. Um, again, that's, that's all the county, not on us. The restricted intergovernmental revenue source, that's your second largest, uh, source of revenue for Main Street as it is with the general fund. This is mostly sales tax revenues. We're projecting a slight increase, about twenty-four thousand dollars in additional sales tax revenue from Main Street.
And this is a local policy, uh, for Gina and Melinda, we can share, uh, our sales taxes from the general fund with Main Street and Seventh Avenue based on their assessed value. So Main Street gets five, Seventh Avenue gets one percent.
Hitting on expenditures real quick, uh, the personnel and benefits recommended budget is six hundred and six thousand dollars, which is a hundred and forty-one thousand dollar increase based on all of the factors that we previously discussed. Plus the addition of two downtown property maintenance workers. One of those positions, I think it's open right now, uh, it was advertised in March. And the second of those two positions will be, um, added and ready to advertise beginning July one. If council so chooses to keep this as the recommended budget.
Can, um, okay, can you break down the downtown property maintenance worker, worker's position? And then what they are doing and then how that relates to special events? And just so that I understand all of this.
I think Brent, Tom, Brian, you guys have had some discussion on those, um.
Yeah, so, um, a couple of things here related to, so the downtown maintenance workers, um, we are implementing those positions, one because our contract with our private vendor, he no longer wants to, um, do the landscaping downtown. So the idea is that we would have downtown folks to absorb the money that we're already expending, um, on that private contractor. He's, he's gonna do, if our members are gonna do our baskets maybe, but, but.
Continue with the baskets.
And so we're, that contract is going away, so we're hiring our own staff to maintain the beds and the landscape. We also will be, um, the idea is that we will have folks there with it also will be able to help with special events. Um, because we're paying overtime right now, um, to bring in extra folks on the weekends to empty trash, clean, you know, check bathrooms, those kind of things. The idea is we will set the schedule for these, um, workers so that they can be on a, it'll be part of their forty dot, forty hour work rate will be, uh, hel- handling special events. So they may not work a standard work week. Um, so they will handle, um, uh, uh, special events and things like that. And also provide a little bit higher, we feel like it can provide a higher level of service on Main Street than what we've done previously. However, so we have. However, so we have, we have two positions there currently now. We are proposing two more, however. Until we work out all the finite details, the scheduling, Franklin, Brent and I and Tom will have this conversation is. And the downtown is exactly how that's gonna work, we've got some devils in the detail. So we're only gonna fund the, one of the two FTEs that you see here. We budgeted two, but I'm gonna hold back one until we're satisfied that the second FTE is needed. And we get things implemented in a way that we ensure that the fourth FTE is is needed immediately. There's gonna be some trial and error about, because the contractor is there only a few hours a week, depending on the time of year. And so we wanna make sure we need all four, so we're budgeting for four, but we're, we're only gonna implement three. And then I'll have the fourth FTE there to make sure we maintain the level of service. If it's not needed, we won't institute, does that help?
And so the other contracts that we have, power washing, baskets, those would not be able to be. Assumed by the additional full-time employees either, or?
Just, the the baskets are just from an expertise standpoint, like, we don't have a greenhouse, they grow those in a greenhouse, they start planting them.
Okay.
We just don't have, and then we are doing some pressure washing.
Okay.
Um, already, and I think it just depends, I, some of that we do, some of it we contract out. Just depending on time of year and those kind of things, because, um, it that, I don't know, Tom, if you wanna address about absorbing that or or how you.
I mean, it's, it it just depends on how many, how many people, really, what, you know, we kind of, like you said, we split up the work. So we contract with pressure washing, some of the sidewalk work, you know, specifically after, after some of the larger events. Our staff typically pressure wash and clean like the trash receptacles, try to get the tables and chairs where we can. It's not very often, but primarily just the trash receptacles, try to keep those as clean as possible. Imagine, they get quite dirty from coffee and ice cream and other stuff over time.
And so we already have two downtown people though now?
And also we're, they're cleaning the, you know, helping with parking deck and things like that, so.
Yeah. And we have just added infrastructure on Seventh Avenue, so I mean, that's.
Which has not been part of any contract, right, or?
Right. And Seventh does carry some hanging basket contract and part of Bruce's, very small part of Bruce's contract currently.
So I, I think that was good discussion on personnel and benefits, if there's, if there's nothing else there that council has questions on that we can help with.
I just wanna take away Mayor Brent D M's comment there, I think what we hear for us. That that our team needs to make sure is that we, by adding these positions, we need to provide value, efficiency. Make sure that we fully utilize these positions in a way that we can justify the additional personnel and additional costs. And offset what we're, make sure we're offsetting the savings that we're getting from the contractor going away. And make sure we, we fully bring value, I think is what I'm hearing, so.
On the operating side, we mentioned a few of these items tied to the personnel recommendation for next year. Contracted services account is a recommended decrease of eighty-three thousand dollars from FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six recommended. So that's reflected of some of that staff, some of the staff offsetting expected contracted work next year. We have included, again, the hanging baskets, Christmas lights, power washing, hardware services and janitorial services. Also included are some barricades, barricade replacements and bench replacements downtown.
Are we still paying Caroline Gunther for tree light storage?
I don't think I got that far.
That was a donated, that was a donated service. Now she may have, still has a light too.
Ask Crystal if she's cut a check lately. That, that leads us to the other financing sources and uses. As I mentioned in the general fund portion of the presentation. Just to balance the Main Street budget at the recommended level, we believe there will be a, a need for a transfer in of eighty-three thousand seven oh one. To keep that fund balanced, based on our estimates, our estimated revenue and expenditure trends. We do not think we will need to do that transfer from the general fund to the Main Street fund.
I forgot to add something.
Sorry.
Uh, the fifteen extra dollars on cars that is supposed to be going to street maintenance. Can we, are we gonna talk about slurry seal? We're gonna talk about what? Slurry sealer? You told me we could talk about it.
Um, did you get pricing on?
We, so, Brandon went down a rabbit hole and. In short, we don't think that slurry seal is a good option for us. We think that getting a crack sealer and and a team to be able to, to seal the cracks in the asphalt would be the better option for us. If he got a price on that, I don't remember what it was. If I had to guess, I don't know, thirty to fifty thousand dollars, but I, I would have to go back and look at that and see what, what that was.
I asked ChatGPT yesterday and it supports that estimate, Tom.
Well, I went down a rabbit hole equally about the slurry sealer and I, I watched a bunch of YouTube videos. And I think that I could, I could maybe help run a crew. Now, the algorithm has, sends me slurry sealers all the time. I get slurry sealers on Facebook, Instagram, lots of, duet.
I said, when are you gonna buy one?
I mean, maybe I'll just start my own slurry sealing empire and I'll, I'll let the city rent my slurry sealer. Listen, the, there's a city in Oregon, or Washington, Bemerton, that it is. I read all their financial information and it is pretty convincing that it's the way to go. I'm telling you, the slurry sealer is, I think it's the way to go.
I think as we prepare for the, the bond and and the fee coming into place and developing full like resurfacing plan for you all to identify the roads. We'll bring crack and slurry and and maybe even if we have to go on a trip.
Crack and slurry?
Crack and slurry.
We're still talking about asphalt, right?
Chip seal is another option.
Chip sealing. We can, we can do a full. Dog and pony show of, of all the options.
Of, of, of street alternative, I mean, I think we're gonna have to, yeah, a street research, I mean, the whole. Options and what's available because of the cost of full resurfacing is getting to the point. If you wanna continue to move that PCI number or protect it, there's going to be other options.
Well, and I will mention there are other municipalities and large county surfaces. That would benefit from slurry sealing significantly, that they would have to pay for the slurry sealing enterprise.
Enterprise.
Alright, bye. Bye.
I, to Main Street.
I support this matter a lot.
So, so.
Now, what'd you take away from that, Adam?
As we've talked about, the general fund is the slurry sealer of all other funds. That's the best I got, totally.
I don't know, I don't know about that sort of thing.
So.
It's a really nice try.
That's all I can do.
I'm gonna keep talking about it, cause I'm telling you, I, according to my research, my independent research, it's pretty promising, slurry sealing.
The, the example that Brandon got was, we're talking with, I believe it was Tarheel Paving, they did a big project out at one of the country clubs. They, they, they slurry sealed their roads and within two years they had to come back and and do a big project, so.
Well, and they make also lots of other money milling and doing larger projects, so they have no interest in slurry ceilings.
Alright, Adam, take us out of the, the Main Street.
Please move on.
I tried, I tried the transition, so I'm just gonna talk. The, um, so the, the Main Street FY twenty-five revised budget. We have a budgeted fund balance appropriation of a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. If we do that, which I don't think we will do based on estimates, we would run a negative fund balance. You can't have a negative fund balance, so that twenty-seven thousand six ninety-nine would be covered by the general fund in FY twenty-five. More importantly, in FY twenty-six, the recommended fund balance appropriation is a decrease of twenty-seven thousand six ninety-nine. As we've mentioned, any of the additional fund balance appropriation on top of the recommended one fifty-five oh two oh would be covered by the general fund. We don't think that's gonna happen and we estimate in FY twenty-six that we'll only use eighty-three thousand five fifty-nine of that budgeted fund balance appropriation. Questions on that? John sold me to wrap it up.
We're hungry.
Seventh Avenue, it, it very closely mirrors the Main Street MSD budget. It's a smaller budget, a portion of the two downtown workers are coded here, twenty-five percent to be exact. It experiences all the same revenue trends that the Main Street MSD fund has, and if you have any questions in specific, I'm happy to answer those. The operating budget. Again, to, to most accounts mirrors the Main Street MSD fund. Contracted services is a recommended decrease of about six hundred and twenty dollars in Seventh Avenue. And it does include a portion of the hanging basket contract, Christmas lights and arborist contract. We budgeted a transfer in from the general fund to cover any fund balance gaps. And we don't think that's gonna happen at the end of the year, we don't think we're gonna need to make that transfer. And currently, the Seventh Avenue fund balance is sixty-four thousand seven sixty-six. If we go on the FY twenty-five revised budget, we'll use forty-six thousand five forty-three of that, leaving us with eighteen to twenty-three. We don't estimate that's gonna happen, so if we expect FY twenty-six start fund balance to be sixty-four thousand dollars. We're, we're planning to eat that from a budget level, but not use quite that much at the estimate level. We estimate we'll only use eighty-three thousand dollars of fund balance of FY twenty-six.
In a nutshell, Main Street and Seventh, Seventh is much better operationally, Main Street's running a deficit. We're gonna run that fund balance down with the deficit until the revow and fix the fund at the revow. They don't have any legal requirements to carry a fund balance and it's used for situations like this. Our plan a couple of years ago was, we know it's gonna cost more to hire the people than to run a, this low contract. We'll eat into fund balance until we get to a point where we can recover additional revenue. Hold on, yeah, we don't have time to get into this. I think we need to break for lunch and we will ask if council has any additional special event considerations when you come back. Uh, to talk about this.
I got thoughts.
If we did talk about it in March, it is something that we wanna make sure we hear the feedback for for next year. Alright, we are, we're gonna break until twelve thirty for lunch.
Jill, any lunch directions?
Pizza and salad out there.
Pizza and salad are out there.
Go eat.
Twelve, twelve thirty trying to get back on schedule. Yes, I will cut my music off.
Are you cheating?
I haven't, I've gotten in trouble for mine.
I'm just fixing that, just in case we need to.
The music mellows out.
Uh, we'll get started, um, jump back in, I think Alan had a, Adam had a slide here on. Or Brian had a slide here on special events, so sorry, whoever's gonna do it, do it, so.
We just wanted to, you know, we presented in March, we gave council time to digest information. We said we'd be coming back to the, you know, receive more guidance from council on what to do with special events. Obviously, special events are underway for this year, so these wouldn't be any major changes currently. But it would give us the opportunity to prepare for the events, the next calendar year. The, the events process really starts in January. It's more of a calendar year ran process, and so any guidance we receive today, we could start building into next year's process. So I just wanted to open up if there were any additional questions or considerations from council on the special events presentation from March.
There's also the July fourth parade. That wasn't listed, you have Christmas parade.
Are you talking about on the slide, Mayor?
Yeah.
This is just an example of a few events, this is not all events.
So, yeah, they, I, this is part of, are there, you know, based on what we presented, I guess the three questions. Do you want us to, to look at freezing the limit, put a limit on it? You know, if you're gonna do, if one go, can't have a new one until the other one goes away, you want us to look at rates for events? Or other, are you comfortable with what, with the city's funding at this point and just? So, are there other considerations or thoughts? I mean, I know it's a lot of information, but I just wanted to. Since it is such a driver for service levels and so.
Sorry.
Lindsay is desperate to tell you.
I'm desperate to tell you, please put a lot of God, let me speak. One thing I do wanna point out on here is that I had Brian relook at the number for Oklahoma Bruins event. It was like significantly high whenever we got that first presentation, so it's sixteen hundred and sixty-four dollars. With that being said, I love Oklahoma, but I do not think the city should be paying for private events. Like, I know that event is technically open to the public, but it's just like any other private business, whatever you do is open to the public. I just think that's a fine line to be walking, to be providing staff time for someone's private event.
And it is the only event.
That's for a private business.
That kind, right?
Yes.
Which may just be because nobody else has asked for one, but I don't know that anybody else would really have the capacity to.
So we do.
And they might not, it's just, yeah, it just seems.
Look at for-profit versus nonprofit event sponsors essentially.
Yes. Yes.
Distinguish between the two.
Distinguish between the two.
Potential costs for a service level.
Yes. Cause it just seems like when we get into providing, you know, cause we're essentially giving that business sixteen hundred and sixty-four dollars. That seems not right.
Which is, so like when we get, like, let's say we had a. A private event and the city limits and we needed to get two off-duty police officers for that private event. The assumption would be that we would pay that as the event organizer, generally speaking, right?
That's right.
Yeah, that's what they do.
It's the event organizer's responsibility to cover that cost. Yeah.
So I feel like maybe it should also be, if it's a private organization. Their responsibility to also pay for the public works cost, or at least a portion of it.
And what would, what would delineate between, like, so for an example, Inaculata has their fall festival, their Oktoberfest. And, which is a special event, so we go through permitting process, we pay for off-duty officers. But we are not using water and sewer and public works because we are maintaining and handling that ourselves. So I guess that could be another question, right, is. Um, it would be very expensive for a business to have to pay for those services unless they did them theirsel- themselves. And is the only reason that that, they have to do that because they're on the avenues or Main Street?
Cause we're closing the street.
Yeah.
Closing the streets.
Closing the streets.
Yeah.
Cause I, since Inaculata is on your private property, all you're having to deal with is the off-duty officers. Cause I, since Inaculata is on your private property, all you're having to deal with is the off-duty officer, so.
Yeah, well, we are, I mean, we do close down the street, um, so we have, like, rides on Oakland, I think is, yeah, Oakland.
We're not providing sanitation or anything like that.
No, no, we rented, we rent a dumpster, we do all of our trash through volunteers, so that could be maybe a way to offset the cost, but then would that standard be done on? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, how do you ensure that the standard of what our staff and crew would do would be covered by the event organizers or volunteers? If you required them to pay for those services?
Right.
Cause chances are, if they had to pay for that on their own, it would probably be less, like, if they had volunteers or something that were managing those things.
It would encourage them to find ways to do it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Free our staff up.
Mm-hmm, right. So that, you could do that maybe some way, like to offset the cost, just say we, we cannot cover these expenses to private events?
Yeah, I mean, if they wanted, if they wanted to seek alternatives, as long as they met our standard, um, we would not be opposed to that.
Yeah, so you would just build that into the permitting process then, or like the, yeah?
It would be in the fees, if it's a private or for-profit event, you would pay a higher rate that would cover essentially the costs of public works, which would ultimately likely incentivize the event organizer to try to find.
But could they do that? They could opt in. Do they have that, yeah, do they have that option to not use the city's staff and, and do it themselves?
Yes.
So as long as, like John said, as long as they do it to a particular standard from a safety standpoint.
So they probably have to submit it as part of their plan, right?
Yeah, they're trying to submit a highly fit of us taking care of their, this is how we're gonna handle solid waste, we're gonna, we're gonna rent it, and we have, we have volunteers who are gonna empty the bag. You know, they would have to give us a plan on how they're gonna do it, and.
That seems more fair to me.
So it'd look like, kind of like an itemized permit, right, like they could, they, we would say, here's what needs to be done in order for us to allow this to happen. You're gonna tell us how you're gonna do it, and one of the options is that you pay the city to do it. The other option is that you do it yourself.
And submit a plan.
And tell us how you're gonna do it, and then.
We're already going through the process on the application to put like a street plan together anyways, so.
But while we're having that discussion though, the city is still, I mean, private business owners aside, the city is still paying a lot of money for other events.
You mean like the Apple Festival?
Um, in, in Matt Manley's terms, this is the low hanging fruit, these private events. But there are some higher hanging fruit, I believe, that are still, um, being subsidized essentially, that's pretty high level. You guys wanna talk about Apple Festival, please?
I'd love to talk about Apple Festival. That's a lot of money.
In the name of tradition.
Uh-huh. Cause that's us paying essentially for all of that public works time, right, and all the police time, like, the festival doesn't give us anything for that.
But we make a lot of money on sales tax and economic development, be real nice to have that extra penny on the TDA tax for visitors and guests who come during the Apple Festival.
Could we split it?
I don't know, it just seems like a big burden for us to handle when we're already closing down our streets to the detriment of some of our business owners, because some of the business owners don't do very well at Apple Festival at all, some of them don't even open.
Yeah.
Yeah. When it's a state festival, a similar, well, you know, the North, it's the North Carolina Apple Festival, and it benefits the county just as much as it benefits us.
Wait, we're in the same jurisdiction?
I don't, yes, we are.
Can you show me a map?
So I don't know, I just think that we need to have some discussions with the Apple Festival. About the cost of this, and that it's getting, it's a little much for us to have to shoulder that burden all on our own. And I know that we do get some sales tax revenue, but we'd get more from the TDA penny because we get the money for people staying in town, which we don't benefit from right now.
Okay.
I also think we probably should look at putting a cap on events. I don't know how we would go about doing that to make it.
We bring back a.
Fair.
Data and a proposal for that.
But like, we have a lot of them. And I love our events. But I know it's getting on some of the downtown peoples.
Yeah, and it may just be, you know, we put a cap on the number of events that we, as it relates to street closures, I mean, they, I mean, if they wanna move,
Yeah.
they wanna move it to a parking lot or move it somewhere, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, those. Give them a park pavilion.
Give them a park, yeah.
Those kinda things, just get them off the, the public street and.
So maybe it's more limiting street closures than it is limiting technically special events, cause you could do your special events other places.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think just encourage them to find other alternatives.
Um, I mean, it's not our job, obviously, to analyze budgets of organizations, but, uh, I know the people that participate in the Apple Festival, the vendors, they pay a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, to be there, so then what does all, what does all that money go to?
So it, it basically goes to run the festival, I mean, renting bathroom, I mean, they pay the city.
Advertising.
I mean, they, they pay a pretty, I mean, they pay the city some money, um, I don't even remember the total, about twelve thousand, yeah, paid the city, yeah, total fees to the city, fifteen thousand there. Fifteen thousand, but they're also, you know, renting, um, trailers or bathroom trailer, bathroom trailers, um, they had to rent, um, now that, um, certain parking lots are being run by private entities, you have to rent, they're renting those to have to use them, like, with the rent property for par, for vendor parking and those kinda, those, those fees go in. The festival uses that money to pay for that, um, there's other incidental costs, they have to pay for the entertainment, the money, you know, for the bands, those fees help offset entertainment cost. So it's, it is very much a break-even kinda nonprofit, kinda, they're not making a lot of money.
It's also hard because, I mean, I'm sure the TDA may have numbers for a lot of these, but the, you know, the additional revenue that comes into our community through passive, you know, sources, I mean, we see like the net losses here, but is there really a net loss for each of these events through other passive incomes too, so like, that's the other thing to consider. And we don't really have that info right now, I would imagine.
For us, it'd be pretty much impossible to get, cause it's gonna come through sales tax, which we know.
And does the TDA track events like that, though?
What about the?
Do they do the cell phone tracking?
Yeah, what about the placer data?
We have that data, but we don't have any direct real impact from the sales taxes because they all go to the state first, it gets all shaken up multiple times before it comes back to us. The occupancy tax is a direct.
Yeah.
Benefit, but that, we do not get occupancy tax revenues. It's a benefit for the e- economy.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Not necessarily a benefit for the city's bottom line.
Right. So even if we went back and looked at the numbers that we did get from sales tax that we would get, could we get them two months after?
Four months.
Four months after. It still wouldn't bring us any clarity to compare those numbers because we don't have anything to compare it against, because.
Well, it's not correlated to how much sales tax revenue we generated.
It's not directly correlated to the sales. Yeah.
During the time that.
Right.
The. Sure, cause why would it be? Okay.
Why would it be? So I guess, yes, we would like for you to look at it and reevaluate it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not, I mean, that's good direction, but.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
All right. We're moving into water and sewer, just as a kind of an overview, we're recommending rate increases at eight percent for water and nine percent for sewer. System development fees are going from twenty five to fifty percent of the recommended fee. The cost of living in this budget is three percent. We're recommending the addition of two line maintenance mechanics, and the inside-outside differential is decreasing from a hundred and twenty five percent to a hundred and twenty.
And I'll just clarify for Nicole, as this is the three percent in this presentation, but the four percent will go across all of us after this meeting.
Starting with revenues, for sales and service, we're looking at an increase of about one point three million dollars over the FY twenty five revised budget. Again, based on that eight, nine percent, uh, rate increase. And we're also, just as a reminder, the sewer differential will not change, that will remain at a hundred and fifty percent for FY twenty six. Moving into permits and fees, the recommended budget totals one point eight million dollars, this is five hundred and seven thousand dollars over the revised level budget. For water tap fees, we're projecting about three hundred thousand, and sewer taps is under sixty five thousand, these are good indicators of growth in the city, or in the utility, rather. And for system development fees, again, set at fifty percent, water system development fees coming in at five hundred and eleven thousand for the recommended budget, and sewer at four hundred and eighty nine thousand. Wanted to give you guys a little more insight into the SDF since we're still rolling them out. So the estimated total for FY twenty five between water and sewer is three hundred and forty five thousand dollars. We're seeing that increase to a million in FY twenty six because of the twenty five percent increase. For FY twenty seven, we're estimating one point five, and then again in twenty eight, uh, one point five million. The fees are charged for new connections, joining the water and wastewater system, and connections requiring additional system capacity. They're applied based on units of service, they're intended to recover the cost of constructing that capacity. They were, they can reduce the reliance on debt for large capital projects in the fund, it can reduce the burden, uh, from existing customers, and it has the potential to ease future rate increase, increases.
And those modeling, that modeling is just based off of current, um,
Developments.
That are like coming online.
Right. And the jump also, if you'll recall, we didn't start charging these till January, so it's the twenty five percent to fifty, and it's a full year.
Any other questions on revenues before I hop into expenditures? For personnel and benefits, we're recommending a budget of one point three million dollars over the FY twenty five revised amount. Again, this is based on that three percent cost of living and the recommended merit pay, which was also in FY twenty four. We have two, uh, new FTEs in the fund, the two line maintenance mechanics, but the water sewer fund will also share a part of that fleet maintenance technician paying thirty four percent of their salary and benefits. The increase to the four oh one K match is gonna cost the fund about forty six thousand dollars, and health insurance in the fund is gonna increase by, uh, five hundred and seventy three thousand dollars. On the operating side of things, the FY twenty, uh, six recommended budget comes in at seventy three thousand dollars under the FY twenty five revised. I wanted to note some of the changes that we were seeing, we're seeing large increases in software costs, which is that permits licenses and fees. Uh, FY twenty six is gonna see an increase of fifty three thousand dollars, that includes programs like Munilink, which are billing, and also Aqua Hawk, which is like an account management. On sludge management, however, we are seeing a reduction at both the water and wastewater treatment plant, about fifteen thousand dollar reduction for water and thirty five thousand dollar reduction in estimated sludge management costs for the wastewater treatment plant.
Did you say that the Aqua Hawk was costing more money?
I do believe it's the Aqua Hawk, that's gone up, and then Munilink has gone up significantly as well.
Is that based off of a, we have a subscription, is that what we're covering, is that what we're paying for, cause we've owned that software for a long time, right?
Yes, we have subscription renewal and also contract renewal, uh, sometimes they'll have three to five percent renewal baked in, but I think just because of the increase in everything, we're seeing a more significant cost. And also for Munilink, we took on a cash management portion of that, is that correct, Crystal?
That's for debt book.
Oh, debt book, sorry. Apologies, so, yeah, so, um, it's a little more significant this year, and we're also seeing that increase in the general fund as well, so it's not just water sewer.
Who negotiates those contracts for us?
It'd be a mix of department heads, staff, management.
Are there other softwares that offer similar services that we shop?
For most software services, we're shopping them, figuring out what's the best service level, all, none of them are all exactly the same, uh, but ultimately, we're shopping them, negotiating them.
Okay.
Trying to get the best deal possible. We're pretty diligent about it, and part of our, one of our IT subcommittees actually looks at making sure we're not over creating software licenses that we might have somewhere else in other divisions and departments, so we, we pay close attention to all our software licenses. But it is kind of the, one of the more natural things of this day and age of government, uh, a lot of these software programs actually are probably saving us needed personnel in the future and things like that, so, yeah.
It also works to make us more efficient, goes through that data collection aspect of things. Any more questions on operating? Moving into capital, this is Pago Capital, the FY twenty six recommended budget comes in at just about two hundred and fifty six thousand dollars over the FY twenty five revised amount. I just provided a high-level breakdown here, so for operational equipment, it's coming in at six hundred and ten thousand, that includes water tap and sewer taps. And then they've also started an initiative, I believe this is phase one of two for bulk water billing kiosks, coming in at forty five thousand dollars. For water sewer line improvements, it's coming in at just over three hundred thousand, pump station improvements at seventy five thousand, and then, uh, improvements at both of the treatment plants totaling three hundred and forty thousand dollars.
I have a question. Do we have any idea what percentage, like, what one percentage on unbilled water would equal in revenue?
I can find out, Chris.
Don't. So it'd be, if water sales were eighty, or eight million dollars in revenue, you divide that by a hundred. I mean, I don't know if that's, that's my quick inventory thought process.
Question exactly.
So like, we hover under thirty percent?
Non-revenue water.
Right, and so do we have any idea what one of those percentages would equal to just like?
Like what our cost to treat and pump.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, it would be college, just treat.
It's, um, our costs are really chemicals and pumping, so even though we charge, you know, what is it, five, six, seven bucks per thousand, it doesn't cost us that much to produce.
Okay.
Not nearly as much. The whole utilities electrical budget is one point two, that's million, that's split between water and sewer.
Okay.
Um, and then our chemical budget, the water plant, I think it's like six hundred thousand dollars, so, um, you could probably come up with an estimate, it's very negligible.
If we were billing it, though, would that be, that would obviously be where the difference would be coming from.
Well, if, if it's not, people aren't using it, so we can't bill it.
Yeah.
So that, that, we would just produce less.
Okay.
The bigger savings we're reducing on revenue water is prolonging your expansion projects, that's where you're really gonna see the good savings, and it's like long-term capital.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to debt service, as Brian, uh, noted, we are in the process of securing a twenty twenty five revenue bond. Uh, so total debt service for the fund is coming in at just about six million dollars, we're still working through the process, we plan on closing on the revenue bond in July. So we're seeing kind of fluctuating interest rates right now, but based on our last conversation, um, we're looking at a debt service payment of about eight hundred thousand dollars for that new revenue bond. And I provided a list of the projects, um, that are included in that bond as well, and if you'd like, I can provide the amount for each project.
What are we contributing to the Highland Lake project?
Highland Lake.
Five hundred and seventy five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Six hundred and fifty.
And that's for relocating lines or?
Water, mostly water, there's a little bit of sewer.
It's a, it's a state formula that we had to pay.
We pay twenty five percent unless it's considered a betterment, so for oversizing lines or whatever, we, we pay the difference.
Did we oversize on that project?
Honestly, don't remember.
I don't think we did, I think we pretty much came back with.
Yeah, I think almost all of it was the percentage, was the, our match requirement.
It would've been a lot higher if we.
Yeah, that's, it's not anywhere in here, but like one ninety-one, we're doing, would be doing substantial oversizing. Betterment. What's that?
I said that is so much money, that whole project.
We get a really, we get a really good deal out of the NCDOT cost sharing for the utilities.
We provided this, it's probably a little hard to see, but it's provided in the budget, and it was in the memo as well, it's just a broad overview. You could see the utility has a lot going on, uh these are all the debt service payments, including the leases that we have. Um and at the bottom, you can see the addition of the twenty-twenty-five revenue bond projects. Moving into the other financing sources, we do have a budgeted transfer out of five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Uh that includes a hundred thousand dollar transfer out to the capital reserve fund. Vehicles and equipments uh are budgeted at three hundred and forty-two thousand, and then we've got a generator project set up for transfer out of seventy-five. I do wanna note on that vehicle and equipment, Adam did decrease the request for vehicles to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year. Just because we did have some vehicles replaced during Helene. Going into fund balance for the water sewer fund, our recommended budget has a fund balance appropriation of two point two million. However, our estimates, assuming ninety-eight percent expenditure and a hundred and four percent revenue collection, um brings our estimated fund balance appropriation down to just under five hundred thousand dollars. Uh the beginning of the year fund balance sits at ten point seven million, and we anticipate an end of the year fund balance of ten point three million dollars. As we've spoken about before, one of the largest indicators of the health of the fund are our revenue bond covenant ratios. And we've been working with our rate consultant Stan Tech to get these ironed out. Uh for FY twenty-four, based on actuals, our bond test came in at one point five four, and test B came in at one point one six. Um this needs to be over one, and this will help maintain the legal compliance for our general trust indenture. Uh and we're looking healthy in FY twenty-five, we're anticipating end of the year, ending the year at one point four nine for test A. And test B at one point oh five, and then right now, we're estimating for FY twenty-six, uh test A coming in at one point three one and test B at one point oh seven.
One thing I'd like to add is, you know, this is, encompasses the operating funds for the water and sewer department. Obviously, the bulk of cost is coming through debt service funds, that is a very substantial and well-planned ten-year capital plan. The capital plan's up around three hundred million, I think, at this point for the ten years. Uh major caveat in kind of where we are with that plan is the FEMA process in determining how much grant funding we'll be able to acquire through FEMA or other grant agencies that we've qualified for by being a, a Helene damaged county. So that is gonna tremendously change the outlook in some form or fashion for this uh rate model. And so our plan is to try to maneuver the next couple of years in understanding where those projects fall out and what happens to our prioritization. Uh and as usual, Adam and the team are working through master plans, our sewer collection plan is the next master plan to be updated. So with that, obviously, we'll bring the consultant and the team in, and we'll be talking to the advisory council and the city council about the sewer collection system and what projects need to be prioritized there. And then obviously, adjusting the capital plan, adjusting the model, and seeing, you know, where we go in the future, but right now, uh the fund is in good financial health, and uh we're really focusing in on getting as much out of the Helene recovery as possible.
Any other questions for water sewer before we move on to parking?
Uh so the parking fund is uh pretty straightforward, uh revenues continue to come in uh as we projected and have been increasing, actually occupancy and revenues have been increasing in the parking fund. Uh we do have increases in supplies for uh orange envelopes and uh have built some funds in for. Uh legit, that's like the driver of our supplies.
Yeah. They are looking for cost savings, though Jamie found some, some, a better deal.
Super, better colored.
Yeah, they're green.
So, no lie, like that's a, a expense driver, it's also a revenue driver.
That's gonna be in the paper tomorrow.
Permits, license, and fees is our largest operational cost, and that is for the software licensing and the cost for transactions. The largest cost in this fund is the debt service on the parking deck at eight hundred and twelve thousand, this will be the second or third year of that payment. And it will progressively go down over time. Uh right now, our transfer in from the general fund is budgeted at two hundred and fifty thousand, but we estimate we'll only need about a hundred and eleven thousand to maintain this fund. Again, revenues uh have hit what was projected, however, increases in personnel costs uh have driven the cost to maintain this fund outside of the uh sustainable level for the rates we're charging. However, we do not feel it's appropriate to raise any parking rates uh currently or in your future. Uh and I'll remind everyone, we do have a parking analytics dashboard, so you can see how the fund is doing over time. Uh you can see uh in September and October, uh the Helene months when we waived parking, it's obviously down ninety-three percent over the prior year. Uh what you saw in November and December of twenty-four, our parking revenues were actually up uh twelve and ten percent respectively. Um so the, the occupancy has been steadily increasing for uh parking downtown. Any questions or comments for parking?
Alright, moving on to stormwater. Starting at the top with revenues, obviously, the stormwater fees are our lar- largest revenue producer in the fund. Uh your anticipate, our recommended budget is two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over the FY twenty-five revised budget. This does come with a dollar rate increase, uh which will bring it up to eight dollars a month per ERU with a fifty-dollar cap and then a four hundred dollar max pay, uh max payment. The one dollar per year rate increase will prepare the fund for the future revenue bond issuances. Bond proceeds will be used to complete projects that have been identified in the comprehensive master, uh stormwater master plan. This is just a, a kind of a screenshot of our uh rate model in stormwater. And so we created the rate model in FY twenty-three. It's set with a proposed uh revenue bond of just about seven million dollars. Just like the water sewer uh fund, the stormwater fund has to maintain bond covenants that will reflect the kind of ratios that we see in water sewer. And the fund will need fund balance to do this. And again, this year, we have a transfer out of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted to establish the capital reserve fund.
Just to clarify one point, we don't have bond covenants in the stormwater fund yet. If we, if and when we pursue a revenue bond, at that point, we'll establish bond covenants through our general trust indenture.
This is a, just a broad overview of um the master plan projects and kind of that financial planning uh of the revenue bond, again, we're still waiting on Mike to really shore things up and get us specifics as far as projects go. But we do have an idea of where we're headed, and the proposed dollar increase will take us through FY twenty-seven where we will uh end up at a nine percent or a nine dollar rate. And the revenue needed to pay uh about five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in estimated debt service for that seven million dollar revenue bond. Out of four and a half percent interest rate. Any questions, comments about revenues before I move into expenditures? Moving into, into expenditures, as is with all of our other funds, personnel and benefits are, is our largest chunk. Um it's coming in at about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars over the FY twenty-five revised amount. We are not proposing any new employees in the fund. The four oh one K match is about a thirteen thousand dollar increase, and the health insurance increase totals a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. On operating, he's got a tight budget this year, he's got a lot of those grant projects and FEMA projects going on. But we are still seeing a twenty-five thousand dollar increase in operating expenditures. Got a hundred thousand dollars for professional services engineering. Two hundred thousand dollars for contracted services, which are general stormwater and construction projects. And about thirty thousand dollars in construction and repair supplies.
Are there specialized engineering services that we cannot provide ourselves?
We do do some of the engineering ourselves, this is just um, I'd have to ask Mike, I'm not sure what he has programmed in for next year, but like the, the folks that are WK Dixon's doing the stormwater master plan, those are like, those, those project scopes are too big for us to be able to do in-house with other water and sewer and other project, greenway projects going on.
Moving on to other sources, specifically transfers. The FY twenty-five revised budget has a transfer out of a hundred and six thousand dollars, this is owed to the general fund. And um we anticipate this being paid back, so moving into FY twenty-six, stormwater will no longer owe the general fund anything. In fact, we have a transfer out budgeted, again, I mentioned that, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars going into that capital reserve fund, so we see that the stormwater fund is really starting to become sustainable, um which is great and takes that burden off the general fund. For fund balance, there is no recommended fund balance appropriation in FY twenty-six. And we estimate ending the year with a hundred and ten thousand dollars in fund balance. Um that does take into consideration that a hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer out, so we're seeing a good turnaround in the fund. Any questions for stormwater?
Just add that, you know, Mike, we approved last night, this project, you know, he has four million dollars, give or take a little bit for grant funds, spending that in those projects.
Everybody seems excited to talk about the environmental services fund again. Um this is, this is the last overview uh that we have before we potentially transition into special appropriations, so I'll, I'll try to be quick. I will take my time with the ESF. To remind counsel, the earlier conversation, uh we discussed rate increases in the environmental services fund to make it fully financially sustainable and not dependent upon uh subsidy from the general fund in any given year. Um because of that target, we have included a seven dollar increase, uh meaning if you have a thirty-two gallon container, you're no longer paying twenty-three a month, you're paying thirty a month. And if you have a ninety-six gallon container, you're no longer paying twenty-five a month, you're paying thirty-two dollars a month. So, that fee schedule change, that recommended change, um generates two point four million dollars in operating revenue, which is an increase of five hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars in FY twenty-six. On the expenditure side, um as we've mentioned in other funds, all the personnel benefits impacts also affect the environmental services fund. The other cost driver in the ESF in the FY twenty-six budget is the addition of three FTEs to hold with the route and efficiency study findings, um so the total increase for personnel benefits in the ESF next year is two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. On the operating side, you can see a very minimal increase of eighty-eight thousand, five eighty-eight. Um this is mostly due to increases in uh things like our annual brush and leaf grinding contract. I think there are a few other contracts, there's also the RFID tag program that we discussed earlier. Um and then the acquisition of additional garbage cans for new customers. So, um the FY twenty-six recommended budget does not include a fund balance appropriation from the environmental services fund. It does estimate that the fund will add under twenty-five thousand dollars to fund balance at the end of FY twenty-six, if our estimates prove accurate. Currently, our FY twenty-four audited um fund balance in the fund, um sorry, our FY twenty-three audit showed a hundred and fifty-six thousand due to the general fund from the ESF, and the FY twenty-four audit showed seventy-six thousand due um from the ESF to the general fund. So, uh we do estimate that the ESF will begin to pay back the general fund uh should council push forward with the recommended rate increases and the revenues as projected. I think I took my time.
These are gonna be uh much easier to see in your binders, oh, sorry.
Before we, yeah, I don't know.
Go on.
Before we move away from ESF. You've got a recommendation. We're gonna move forward, I mean, we got a seven dollar increase, like, okay, okay.
Is seven the?
I think if you wanna move forward with what we're doing, we, we gotta do seven dollars.
But all the more reason to not make cuts.
Right, that, yeah.
It's hard to swallow that you're gonna increase the rate by seven bucks and then also do, do less.
Do it half the time, right, yeah.
So we gotta get more efficient, okay.
Yep.
I know it's much needed, but my concern is the impact it may have on some marginalized homes, you know. Seven dollars increase, if you do it seven dollars times twelve, that's eighty-four dollars a year. That could have an impact on some, that's all I'm thinking, but I know it's needed.
And eventually, it's gonna be.
We're gonna spread it over, it's gonna be a one time. Okay, if you spread it out, then it won't be as detrimental as if you just.
If you spread it out, it won't.
Okay.
And it will come either in the form of a fee or a property tax. Cause otherwise, somebody, somebody has to pay for it.
Yeah.
And it's either the, the property tax rate, you raise a penny, that's a hundred dollars on your bill for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar valued home, or your seven dollar monthly fee and rates, so it's, it's one of those things where, where we have to pay for the service from some direction.
So we'll do it like we did before, where it was like, well, the first year was certain of like two percent.
There's, there's, they're gonna increase it seven dollars per month.
Starting July.
Starting.
Starting July. Guess I need a second job.
Just for comparison, any idea what the private contractors charge per month?
It was more, so we pulled it last time we did our rate model, it was pretty substantially more for less service. We can bring that to budget adoption and get a clear update on that, that way you have that budget adoption.
I think you guys had it on your slide when you did the rate presentation to us, maybe two or three months ago, there was, yeah.
And it.
Cause there was like Mabens and like there were other ones that compared it to.
And it totally, I live out in the county, and I had my old trash service was just bought by somebody else, and their rates increased substantially, I, I'm paying more than this. And they charge for recycling additional, and they do every other week recycling, so.
And you don't get brush or leaf.
No.
Yeah, I live in Asheville, and I, I, it's about thirty-six dollars a month, and I don't get leaf co- I wish I got leaf collection. I don't get leaf collection, so the amount of services that we're providing is substantial.
We'll make sure to bring a good, yeah, comparison.
Like good, alright. We just wanted to highlight some, we're kind of wrapping things up, so we wanted to ha- uh to highlight the, some of the proposed changes in the fee schedule. Um uh like I was saying, it's a lot easier to see them on your printouts, but these are gonna be the new water and sewer rates with that eight, nine percent increase, the first page is water, and then the. The first page is water and then the second will be sewer. And this covers the litany of volumetric, uh, what the public schools cost, the MSD sewer, and also the base and the usage rates. For system development fees, I've also supplied what the new water and sewer system development fees will be. This is the residential side for the single-family dwelling. It's based on heated square foot. For public works, they are recommending that we remove the patent park field usage fee. Right now, it's thirty dollars per player per season. And then again, we're just outlining those ESF fee changes. So that's the bulk of the changes in the.
I will note that there is a increase to the sidewalk encourage or sidewalk payment and lieu of fee uh from seventy-five to a hundred and thirty dollars as well, um, based on what we're seeing for cost to construct sidewalks.
Do we wanna do it?
So.
Let's go over it and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure, sure. So special appropriations this year, I found it to be a rather unique year because there's a lot of grit money floating around. So for instance, Piska Legal Services didn't request their typical, um, their typical appropriations because they've already gotten the funding, um, which is fantastic. Just as a reminder, the budget for special appropriations is set at point zero five percent of the budgeted expenditures in the general fund. The limitations on this, it must be for a public purpose. The city must statutorily be permitted to engage in the activity and the expenditure must be consistent with state and federal law, which I'd hope. There are two categories that we have. We have arts, education, culture, and recreation. Right now, that budget is, uh, that bucket is twenty-five percent of the special appropriations budget. And then life quality and economics, economic services comes in at seventy-five percent. And then, as you may know, we have that full funding list at the bottom. These are for uh things that the city deems necessary services. So this year, the city manager's recommended target is a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. This does not include that full funding list, so these are just the top two categories. For arts, education, culture, and recreation, the total request came in at just over sixty thousand dollars. And for life quality and economic services, our total request came in at just over three hundred and five thousand dollars. Twenty-five percent of the budget available for the arts, education, culture, and recreation is um thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty. And for life quality and economic services, you've got a budget availability of just over a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
So, um, we've got responses from two of the five of you. I would offer a couple of alternatives. One, um, if we want to, um, delay, take, delay this until your workshop meeting and allow you a little more time and sometime where you could meet with staff and we could help you get, get all five and then we could just do the average and do that at your workshop meeting at the end of the month. We give you that option or I don't know that, um, the other option, I guess it's just to pull up the spreadsheet and let y'all speak your piece now and.
I think the workshop meeting makes more sense. Y'all need to get on it.
And if you'd like, I can resend the link to the applications and the spreadsheet. And then there's a printout in there if you wanna manually enter what you'd like and you can get those over.
And staff are glad to, to work with you to get it entered, so. Does it sound like a plan to do it at the workshop meeting? Does that sound like a?
Can we have a pilot vision? So we can do it, you have to see.
Wow, y'all are cooking something up over there.
Okay.
I, yeah, that's fine. I could go.
We can go with.
I'm like motivated.
They gotta tell me, Jen, you haven't done this yet.
No one told me that. You want me to email you? Yes, Jen, you haven't done this yet. Thank you. I'll email you Monday morning. Jen, go do that. Yes, ma'am.
All right, we're at the end. We're entering the deep waters. I mean, to be honest. I'm already in it.
I forgot about our little illustration.
Yeah, this, this is an image I found on uh Google. And I thought it represented well our, our term trajectory as a city. Um, we are facing immense, I, I won't, I won't beat around the bush. We are facing immense increased staff demands and capacity constraints because of the hurricane. It is becoming a full team effort and a ton of work to, to pursue this FEMA funding and, and get as much as we can and build back better. It's gonna take time. There's other grants out there that we're pursuing on, on the back of that. And really, you know, we felt that this budget needed to be tight, focused, so we can really put our energy into finishing our existing projects and really capitalizing on hurricane recovery. And John, if you wanna add anything, we have this wonderful quote that you said. You wanna close out anything?
No, just, I, I appreciate the work of the team. Um. What do you got?
Oh, I'm talking to Brandy.
Oh, okay. I just appreciate, um, a lot of hard work by the budget team and all the folks sitting around the back of the room. But yet, this next year really is gonna be focused on the recovery. Uh, we've talked a good bit about it, um, today and you know, the recovery and, um, coming out stronger and better, so, um. And I think I have to say, we, we have tightened the reins and, but I think we're, as you can see with the model, it's gonna benefit us in the future as it relates to sustainability of the community and having a strong financial position, so. Thank you and I appreciate your time and those things. And, um, so from here, um, we'll do special appropriations as part of the workshop meeting and, and then we'll have a public hearing, uh, lecture June fifth meeting, reminding everybody that, um, budget is not done until it is adopted by city council. So as, as you move away, if you have other questions and comments, um, we can make changes all the way up to your adoption. So it's not done until you raise your hand and approve it, so. There'll be opportunities for additional questions and if you wanna make adjustments, you may. So, but we'll have that public hearing scheduled for a month and then get final direction from the city council and it just has to be adopted by June thirtieth.
And I'd like to commend the department on the excellent, I especially like the portal with, with the toggles where you can play with the numbers and things. I do a little bit in the center. I think that's a plus.
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor, we are done.
You wanna have any other final comments? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.